How are you?
Awesome, thank you.
Sometimes I'm like, I can't get every... No. Then, um...
Thank you.
I can't keep up with putting it on my calendar.
That's part of the... The part of it is also the vertical Laska thing now.
Oh, childcare. You have a good provider?
I don't think that we would have a representative from the school board here.
They are the third entity.
It's two.
It's not unusual that we do only one.
Yeah.
This is not you?
Cause then, you know, the clock over.
No.
We're gonna need another chair if there is...
Like I said, I just not that I needed the pen. It was just the sent down quality towards that.
Get a board up Charlie.
You're like me.
I need it at certain meetings.
Alright, I think we're gonna...
I have a red in. But I also need one for tomorrow night's meeting. So my tablet's doing...
I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the Iowa City City Conference Board Agenda. Roll call, please.
Iowa City Council members present. Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
Johnson County Supervisors. Green Douglas?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Porter? Reddick?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
And Iowa City Board of Education. Eastham, Malone, and Wrestler. They obviously don't have a vote. We do have a quorum though, so...
Alright, well, great. Welcome, everybody, to the Conference Board Meeting and Agenda. We are going to go to item number C, which is a motion to approve the minutes of February 19th, 2019. Conference Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Item D. This is the fiscal want fiscal year 2021 budget. The purpose of this meeting is to set a public hearing for the Iowa City Assessors' proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. And I know Brad, you're gonna kinda give us some updates there.
I'll go over it real quick. Most of our budget every year is eighty percent of it is related to personnel. So as you can expect, that's what most of the changes are this year. A few of the highlights. In salaries, we've budgeted two and a quarter percent for an annual increase similar to what the county was using. I got that number from the county HR. And then we've got various merit percentage increases among the staff. Corresponding to that, diary increases in FICA and IPRs. And then a, almost an eight percent increase in health insurance. The other... Every other year, we have big, either a big increase or a big decrease in postage and printing. Fiscal year 21 will be a reassessment year, so we've increased it to reflect that we'll be mailing assessment notices to everybody. That's, as far as the budget, oh, and then also a $3,000 annual amount that we add to our reserve auto fund. So that's really all there is for the actual budget. I should point out also, I don't know if you noticed, on the budget that I shared at the bottom of that, it shows an increase in the amount to be raised by taxation. A year ago, we had an empty, an empty position in our office, and that allowed us last year to have a pretty low levy rate. And I asked for not very... It was a pretty sizable decrease in the amount of taxation to fund our office. In hindsight, after talking with some county finance, maybe I should've spread that out because now my levy rate is going on the other direction. If you average them out, it'd still be, it'd still be a really good levy rate. And actually, it's, it's just on the high end for our office over the last few years. Last year's levy rate was the lowest that I could find on record for our office. And this year, it's gonna be a little different. But in the future, if I had that happen again, I think I'd try to stabilize it a little more. But...
Thanks for that explanation, cause I was wondering. And so that's why you had that large unassigned balance from the previous year was because we budgeted for that position, but it wasn't filled?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Other than that, I guess I'd like to thank my evaluation committee. Mayor Bruce, Lisa Green Douglas, and Charlie Eastham from School Board. We met on January 6th and were able to talk about our office performance. And I think that went well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Brad, this is about salaries. So you use the county's evaluation tool for your staff that gets to merit, right?
Yes.
So they would get, like, our non-bargaining at the county, the 2.25, and then whatever merit they earned. What do you do for yourself and your deputy?
I use the same merit scale for the deputy, but for my, for the de... We have two deputies, actually. For myself, I, I just put a number out there. I fill out that self-evaluation, and then I take it to our, to my committee evaluation. And we go over all the, all the answers that I put in. But yeah, that number isn't necessarily developed from the merit.
Sure. So did the committee then, Lisa, come up with a recommendation?
We accepted.
Okay. I, I just, we just came from the county assessor board, and based on 2.25, you guys would, you would be losing ground. So I'll hold this until we talk about that evaluation then. Thanks.
Anyone else wanna make comments about the budget?
One, Janelle. So you saw, for my salary, I have been at 3.75.
Okay.
After the...
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
I'm supportive of the budget as presented.
And is there any one that is... I know that Supervisor Lisa Green Douglas and I were a part of the evaluation. I don't know if there's any desire for anyone to go into closed session or executive session to discuss the budget or anything related to employment? No? Okay, alright. We just, alright, so would someone like to make a motion to accept the budget? I just heard Susan Mims.
Move.
Yeah, second.
Does...
No, it'd have to be second by something else.
Second.
Oh.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, yes.
And authorized publication.
Publication, yep.
Yes. So this motion is to approve publication on the proposed budget. Moved by Sully, seconded by Sullivan. All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passes. Alright, so moving on to item number E. There's, there's a motion, I need a motion to set a date for public hearing. And the suggested date at this point is February 18th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hayden, seconded by Mims. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion passes. Item number F. This is present Board of Review applications. I believe we have one.
There's just one, one applicant for Board of Review. It's Ryan O'Leary. He's a realtor in town. He also has, owns property. He's involved in a number of things. I think he'd probably be a good addition to the Board of Review. If...
Move the appointment of Ryan O'Leary.
Kim, second. Moved by Sullivan, seconded by Thomas. All in favor say aye for the appointment of Board of Review member Ryan O'Leary?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Alright, so this is a time for Board comments.
I'll just make one comment. I'd asked Brad this before the meeting, and so I'll just make it, let everybody know. I had just asked about whether the Iowa City Conference Board is audited on an annual, every other year basis. Assessors' office, I'm sorry. And we didn't, Rod and I and Brad were talking and didn't really have an answer. So they're gonna check with the county and see if they're being audited through the county. And if not, just see if there's anything that we need to do in that regard.
I'll report back on that at our next meeting.
Thank you.
We're discussing that we think you would have to be because we're your fiscal agent and everything's audited.
That's kinda what Rod thought, and we're just, they were just gonna check for sure.
Any other comments? Alright, moving on to Agenda number I. And that is adjournment. Do I have a motion? Alright, we have moved by...
Me.
Second.
Alright, Sully? Seconded by...
Rod.
Sullivan? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Wow. That's what's...
Good work, Bruce.
Alright. Next.
Should've been harder on you. That's ridiculous. Throwing us out that quick.
Yes, oh yeah.
Second one will be about... Typical Iowa City meeting.
Uh-oh. Don't put that pressure on me. Alright.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yes, have a good night.
Bye.
I'm gonna go ahead and invite HCDC up.
I don't know how many of them.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Have a good night.
Are there...
Hi, everyone.
Isn't there like five members?
I'm not sure.
Just the commissioners?
Yes.
One, two, three. At least I know three.
Yeah. Sure. Okay, awesome. Okay, okay, awesome. I'm gonna go ahead and invite HCDC Commissioners up to join us, please. Let's see, yeah, we have enough. Yep, I see six. Here is the minimum, so, yeah. Three, six, yeah. It's six. Yep, so we should be good.
Okay, yeah, there is one over there.
Alright, so we are transitioning into our Iowa City City Council Work Session for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, here at City Hall. And we have just invited HCDC up here to join in the first item that we're gonna discuss. And this is the joint meeting with them in relation to the discussion for funding for the aid to agency grant program. I'm gonna invite Kirk up here and maybe give us a little background from staff perspective.
So Kirk Lehman, Community Development Planner, I staffed at HCDC. I just wanted to go briefly over the background about how we ended up where we are today. So with some initial changes, the second round of changes, and then today's request. So in July 2018, council adopted changes to the aid to agencies process where prior it had been one funding round that would occur from August through July when they would receive funding. That recommendation split aid to agencies into two sets of funds. So legacy agencies were those who had received funding in the past five years. And then emerging agencies were everybody else with most funds going to, to those legacy agencies then. In January of 2019, then, as that first set of recommendations was, was going through its first funding round, HCDC was considering the legacy aid to agency allocation. At that point in time, HCDC had a budget request, or a budget estimate of $355,000. And HCDC decided to make a recommendation for full funding of requests for legacy agencies, which was $625,500. They requested a joint meeting with council to discuss. And in February, they had a joint meeting on, on February 5th. And council recommended approval of that as a one-time allocation with the understanding that HCDC would again revisit that aid to agencies process to see if there's a way to avoid those last-minute budget requests again. So HCDC went through another funding process evaluation from April to June. And in July, made a new recommendation. And that is what you find in your agenda packet up there. So with that, legacy agencies was no longer those who had received funding in the last five years, but instead got incorporated into the city steps funding, or the city steps plan, which is the consolidated plan that is updated every five years. And that is also reviewed annually. So it gives an opportunity for new agencies to potentially come in. But it also adds some consistency because it's a formal process for determining what are legacy agencies. So council approved that in September. And during that time, city staff plus the city council, or city manager's office and HCDC representatives, as well as agencies, all met to discuss what budgets might look like in the future. And the Agency Impact Coalition, which is the Coalition of Legacy Agencies, came up with a request of $500,068 and $400 as a, as a budget estimate. December, this last meeting for HCDC, December 19th, the Agency Impact Coalition again came back and noted they would really like to maintain those current funding levels because they had seen increased need, which I imagine HCDC will be talking about. And so they came back with a request of $675,000. And that led to this request in this meeting, once council accepted the request. So in terms of moving forward, then, after this meeting, HCDC will make its budget recommendation on January 23rd. So right now, staff has estimated $435,000 based on the proposed budget that is currently out there. So that would be for legacy agencies in addition to $23,000 for emerging agencies. So that would be 458,000 total in aid to agencies. And HCDC has received 660,300 in aid to agency requests from legacy agencies. So I can throw out more numbers at you, but most of those should be in here. Again, it's in your packet. But if you do have questions, just wanted to give you a brief background on that.
Thank you, Kirk. And so for the purpose of councilors here, we're very happy that HCDC has made this recommendation. And for those out in the community that don't know what HCDC means, it means the Housing and Community Development Commission. And so we wanted to definitely welcome all of you for being here today. Because all of us don't know you, I know each of you, but I would like just to go around and just say your name for all the councilors. Please repeat, please.
John McKinstry.
Megan Alter.
Matt Drabek.
Vee Fixmore Rice, the Chair.
Peggy Aguilar.
Maria Padron.
Thank you all for coming and being a part today. So what I'm thinking is, we might start with if HCDC would like to share with us. And then after that, we'll have some council discussion. And councilors, feel free to jump in and seek any clarification that you might have.
Thank you, Bruce. And thank you, council members, for agreeing to have this joint session. It's, it's interesting to note that it was almost a year ago that we were here last time. And it's obviously a little bit different makeup, but we're, we're very excited to be continuing this conversation with you. I think that, you know, I really commend the agencies in our community and my fellow commissioners for really trying to create a fair, transparent process for people applying, for organizations, agencies to apply for this funding. And I think that we've really tried to put together a process that works well. And I'm, I'm really heartened by the fact that we've had conversations with city staff, with the city manager's office. So I just kinda wanted to say thank you to everybody for putting so much time and energy into this. And I think really tonight, there's a couple of reasons why we thought it might be good to just continue this conversation. One is, and this is kind of overall, is to really shift our understanding of the work that our human resources nonprofits perform. And that it's, it's not necessarily charity, it's really an investment. And I think for Housing and Community Development Commission, every year, we get funding requests that are, that far exceed, and historically have far exceeded what we've been able to provide. And I think that that's why last year, you saw this real change. And there are reasons for that. You know, just to kinda recap some of the data that we had had last time we had convened, you know, the local population has, has grown 11% from 2010 to 2017. We've had increased costs of living, more than 14% inflation from 2010 to 2018. And the number of people served by the agencies has increased, and funding has remained flat or actually decreased. With increased demand, agencies have not, have really needed to increase their staff, their staffing and their supplies. And we've seen this, actually, agencies coming forth and saying that they're at risk of losing federal funds because they can't get their matching funds. And that's a real concern for us. And really, when I say investment, I mean, I think that what I'm trying to get at is, you know, the services that our nonprofits provide, the city cannot provide, right? But they, they really are providing benefits that have costs that, that tri, like trickle out throughout our entire community. And so it's, it's the human cost, but it's literally the, the amount of funds that they can, they can generate in the projects that they do and the people that they serve. That type of investment, I think, is, is something that we should really be looking at. And I say that as though they are vendors. They're providing services to our community that I don't think anybody else can really provide. So I think it's sort of important to kind of frame it in that regard. And then I kinda had two sort of goals, a short term and a long term. One would be to create a starting point for funding agencies that accurately reflects the public needs being served by those agencies. So the starting point that we had, it was like 300 at Kirk. It was, you know, it was pretty abysmal, and it had been flat and line for a really long time, for over a decade, which is before we came last year. And we had, I, I think what we're seeing is that we need a new starting point that actually reflects what is going on in our community. And I think that it was somewhat of a surprise to city councilors last time because nobody had really presented data. And that's kinda what we're hoping to continue the discussion about today. And so then our recommendation is that, that starting point be 675 moving forward, $675,000. And then second is a long-term plan. And I really would like to encourage another conversation that is to start planning for a sustainable investment resource outside of aid to agency. So our recommendation, or my recommendation, would be that we collaborate with city staff to outline a pathway forward to launch a local option sales tax venture. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity. That's one idea. But I think that there's a real desire to push this a little bit further. That the, the, the community that we are a part of is really strong and vibrant when we look at like our volunteerism. When we look about and see the diversity and the strength that we have, these seven goals, our social justice, our racial equity, all of, all of these elements, I think that we can rally around our nonprofits who serve our community and create a local option sales tax venture that would be successful. And so to keep those local nonprofits in that calculation for that. And so I really would welcome a conversation and a plan to move forward because I think that we need that long-term, that long-term vision, that long-term venture, whatever that may be. There've been a couple of those discussed, utility tax, local option sales tax was the one that I think has gained a little bit more traction. So anyway, those are kind of the opportunities that we have discussed with the, the Agency Impact Coalition and with city staff over this last year. So those are kind of the two things I was hoping that we could discuss a little bit further. And then I would also like to introduce our aid to agency, or our Agency Impact Coalition. Too many agencies. Agency Impact Coalition actually put together a presentation to sort of introduce themselves. And I think that they have some really interesting and compelling information that as HCDC, you know, it's, it's really their story to tell. So if it's okay with you, I, I think that they would like to show their presentation.
Sure. Do we have staff that can help set up the computer?
Hi, good evening. My name is Nikki Ross. I am co-chair of the Agency Impact Coalition. We convened for the first time last February. And we have 17 of 22 agencies who receive A2A funding are part of our coalition.
I'll let you introduce yourself, too.
I'm Chrissy King-Ganelli, Executive Director, and Shelterhouse is a member of the Agency Impact Coalition.
Before we begin, so I know how quickly to move, how much time would you like to give us for this part?
How much time do you, would you like?
I will keep it snappy, and you can ask questions if I go over things too quickly. How about that?
Great, thank you.
Okay. So really, we will reiterate what it is that Vee said. We are asking for an investment in our collective community impact. We wanna talk a little bit about that today. Something that might've been missing from the process, a prior process, and the determination of what funding should be for our social services in our community is really the conversation about what is that scope? And how are we working together to provide this much-needed service to our community and enrich the lives of people? We don't talk about that often enough, in my opinion, and in an opinion of AIC. So let's start with talking about, ooh, I'm going the wrong direction. The continuum, the continuum of care. The idea that we have funded organizations as a, okay, we're gonna put some, some funds here to healthcare, to education, to employment. We wanna make sure everybody understands. And the reason we convened together is to tell our story together. This is a continuum of care. Every piece works together. All these organizations work together to provide a framework and a safety net for folks in our community who are vulnerable. We cannot do it on our own as a single organization. The city cannot do it on their own. We have to combine that together. That collective impact has substantial economic multipliers and a significant public benefit that positively impacts our community. I'm gonna go through some of these pretty quickly, but I'm gonna ask also Chrissy to help me. We have several points about actual cost impact to our community for some of, some of the work that we're doing collectively. I tried to identify where the information came from at the end here. So we know that the winter shelter decreased, decreased vagrancy calls by as much as 74%. That's a decrease in public safety costs. In terms of healthcare, we're sending folks to the appropriate level of care when they get support from the free medical and dental clinic. And then, you know, improvements in housing are also contributing to those decreased healthcare, hospitalization, emergency room, and even incarceration costs. The other two areas that we chose to identify tonight, just know this is, there's so many more. We tried to like sum it up. It's just that, that improved employability. So the youth organizations in our community who are part of this are building mentoring relationships that have enabled 55% of the student mentees to stay in high school. 100% of everyone in the youth transitional living program as part of UAY has obtained or maintained employment. I mean, not just providing housing, but actual economic contribution is provided. Childcare, I think you can, I mean, that's a clear connection. And then the, the other piece, the last piece we wanted to talk about was how our organizations are actually capturing extremely valuable resources that are, would not be captured by anybody else. So first of all, we're, we're organizing, we're utilizing local funds to leverage state and federal funding. It's really important to know that as local funding decreases, we are at a huge risk of losing federal and state dollars if we cannot keep up. of losing federal and state dollars if we cannot keep up. For the free medical and dental clinic, 1.6 million of in-kind expert medical services are provided to people. That's how we can keep that cost low, that's how we can provide appropriate care that doesn't involve going to the emergency room. Table to table, we, just for what we bring to Iowa City, is four and a half million dollars worth of food that would go into the landfill. And we're getting it to people who need it. Food pantries, meal sites, and meal delivery services are bridging that meal gap for a fraction of the cost of retail food. And wherever possible, all of our agencies are utilizing volunteers to provide basic services. That was a quick summary of that. So let's move into what funding has looked like. The Iowa Policy Project folks put together an assessment for us to understand how funding has kept up over time. And what they discovered is that when you take into account inflation, aid to agency funding has decreased by 17%. If aid to agency funding is meant to provide a stable source, something that we can rely on to continue the level of our services, that's been a challenge, and it's not sticking up there with us. And so we have a few examples. It's a lot of information, it has been provided to you. I will ask Chrissy to help me with some of the different items, but I'm just going to call to your attention. We've gotten six organizations to provide some very specific examples. A lot of what we've talked about is broad, but here are some specific organizations. So the free medical and dental clinic, they did receive an increase in funding, but take a look at, doubled their weekly clinics and increased, you know, shifted their focus from drop-in urgent care to more comprehensive health services. I'm going to let Chrissy take over for me.
So to pick off where Nikki left, is, what we tried to do is take a snapshot of several different organizations and share with you, given the level of funding in 2010, so if you look at that blue-ish text box there, given the level in 2010 compared to FY 2019 funding, to look at that in comparison to how our service needs or service costs based on either activity level, service of units of service, how those have changed in comparison with the level of funding received from aid to agencies. In every way, it's not kept stride. We've really struggled with trying to communicate different metrics that would speak in a consistent way for the council. But at the same time, we also want to, as we're sharing this information, add to the conversation that this is based on a gross assumption, which is that, in the first case, that FY 2010 funding was a relevant starting off place to even begin the conversation. And I would say without exception, across the coalition, we agree that it is not. So free medical clinic, in indicating the numbers of individuals that they're seeing and the services, they've increased their weekly medical clinics by 30%, doubled the number of weekly dental clinics, talking about the scope of services, so more comprehensive care, and shifting from acute to chronic care. All of these things are much longer conversations, but we're trying to truncate the information to make it something that can be metabolized in a short period of time in this evening's conversation. So 37% increase in costs required to support the increases in the number of scope of services. And then if we go back into that text box, it costs $317,000 per year to serve Iowa City residents in the free medical and dental clinic, and they're leveraging so much more. And then briefly, just some high-level kind of impacts and costs to the community, you can see there in the bottom, and I don't want to continue to read everything for everyone. But any questions on that? And if there are, I'd ask Barbara to speak to that.
I knew Chrissy could help summarize what we were trying to get at, so thank you for that. And I'm just going to go through really quickly. I do encourage you to read these more closely. I think what they do is paint a picture for us of how every individual service has grown in its own way to meet a changing scope of need in the last 10 years, and then how that reduction of funding is ultimately impacting these organizations and our community. So UAY expanded programming, their funding has decreased by 54% in the last 10 years. They've adjusted the scope and direction of services while having minimal budget increases. That's, you know, that's an incredible feat, but then to continue to do that with 54% less funding. Community has offered a 48% increase in their number of assists, doubled the amount of food per visit. So folks, when we're talking about people visiting a food pantry, it really matters how much people are walking away with, like how long they can be fed by these programs. And a doubling of the amount of food per visit certainly makes an impact there. This is correlated with, this one's an interesting one, because to talk about why we should maintain the level of funding, this year, with that increase in funding that was offered by the city, community was able to support an 8% increase in the number of people served and do a Saturday pantry. So these are real impacts. Shelter House, I'll let you speak to this.
Sure, thanks. So one thing that I'd use us as an exemplar of is that initially, aid to agencies funding supported emergency shelter services. Again, the amount that we were initially awarded, based on not necessarily relevantly need, as I was told, and I'll be candid in this, going more than 15 to 20 years back, where you were funded at was based on, and I quote, from past city staff and past council members that I advocated with, again, no one here today was a part of those conversations, but it depended on who you knew within the staff and the council, and when you came into the process. Not very data-informed. So just based on the changing, just alone on the nights of shelter, 148% increase in the nights of shelter. But over time, and if we just look at FY 10 as a starting point, we've radically changed the service offerings through Shelter House, and we're not unique. Other agencies have done the same work. So the work that we're doing is more sophisticated, it's more expansive, not based on us driving that, but on the community need. And there are macro issues that we're responding to that we don't have control over. So programs such as rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, which are allowing us to not just manage homelessness, but end it and make real impacts in our community that have public benefit, these things are not even consideration in the current funding levels, and are technically, if we wanted to be restrictive in how we talked about that, not literally supported at the current levels. Again, using us as an example, that we're not unique, there are other, the same stories across these different agencies. Is that helpful?
And I do want to make sure that we'll have more time for council to discuss with the commissioners, so.
That's why I asked.
All right, thank you.
So you'll note two additional examples. It's a similar story, but we all are doing things, expanding services, or Big Brothers and Big Sister has a waiting list, that's one thing we haven't talked about yet. What happens when you are not funded? You do not grow to meet the need, and you have a really big waiting list, and that's fewer folks who can benefit from these services. And so I'm going to have Chrissy speak to this last slide.
So our focus here in our message is that we amplify and exponentiate the work of the city, your work, and we can't do that without your support, this is a collaboration. And moving forward, we have essentially three asks. And it's to work together in collaboration to, number one, approve, we recommend, to approve the current funding recommendation from Housing and Community Development Commission. Help us move the needle forward on this foundational starting point. Continue funding at this level, it's the minimum needed to maintain our sustainability, our consistency, and our continuity in care. To build, strengthen our continuum of care by increasing the investment in our operating capacity and our capital needs. And three, to commit. Commit to establishing new and increased financial resources, invest in our collective community impact. We hope to do this in partnership with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's the impact, the Agency Impact Coalition members, so really appreciate your coming out and having a video to share with council and the commissioners today. All right, so we'll kind of open it up to councilors and commissioners to have a discussion.
I would like to say a few things from the last time that we met, and is that these agencies combined have a full-time equivalent of more than 500 employees, and they bring to our community $36 million from other sources of funding, and also they provide benefits like retirement and healthcare and things like that to their employees.
One question I would have is on the, how is your funding from private donations, the aid agents, the agencies, how is their funding trending? Is it increasing as well or decreasing?
I am not aware of their private funding, like, resources, revenues, and I'm certain it's probably different according to each.
Probably different, but yeah, in terms of, is it trending, is it flat as well or is it increasing? Anyone speak to that?
Yeah, maybe one of the agencies can speak to it, please.
Stu Mullins from UAY, ours has gone up, that's one of the, they touched on that we've had a, you know, we've halved our amount in the last 10 years, and that's how we've tried to keep up. And yeah, our fundraising has been aggressive, we worked really hard at it, and it has gone up a lot. I think in the last year or so, it's gone up 150%, something like that. So that's how we're trying to meet our gaps.
I will comment on that, too, is, you know, it also depends on your capacity, right? So how much capacity do you have with staffing to commit to fundraising? And I think that certain agencies probably are at a disadvantage or a steep learning curve with that, you know, so it's sort of a circular kind of.
Yes, and we, I mean, I'll just, I'll make one last comment, I mean, that was a, by design, the board and I and our management team, we wanted to go after it aggressively and put somebody in that role, A, to fill that gap where we were losing money, but also to have the community better understand our value. That was a big piece of it, was just, we needed to do a better job of raising money, but a better job of showing why we're important, so.
I would just comment that I think your presentation this evening, where you did show the kind of the collective impact, addresses to some degree the fact that each agency's capacity to fundraise is different. So it seems to me that the collective concept both better portrays the fullness of what it is that's being provided, as well as could help with the fundraising component that would go along with it.
I just want to ask you, remind me, what's the original amount we have the city allocated for?
Before last?
For the increase, yeah.
For the increase? I can't remember, it was something like 350, 355 or something?
And when is the?
378.
700 for a couple of years.
Yeah.
It was how much?
378, 700 for a couple of years.
Okay, when the last time we increased it?
Last year.
Over 10 years ago.
Before.
It's 10 years ago, like 2010?
No.
Good evening, Jeff Ruin, city manager. We've really looked back from fiscal year 10, it's been pretty steady, it's gone up a little some years, gone down a little some years, both in the general fund contributions and in the CDBG contributions. Staff looks at it a little bit more holistically and looks at all of the support that we're providing to agencies, not just legacy agencies or emerging agencies. So some of you may recall, when this came up last year, we laid out, while the grant program has stayed fairly stable since 2010, that funding level, the city has certainly picked up funding for a number of other causes, winter shelter, behavioral access center, things of that nature, even the 1105 project we financially contributed to, and of course, you're very familiar with what we've done in the affordable housing area. So when I look at aid to agencies, I don't look at it as a grant program, I look at it as more of a holistic approach to how the city is funding some of these community needs. And if you look at it that way, our support has grown tremendously since that time. However, the grant program itself has stayed very flat. What was proposed to you in the fiscal year 21 budget is roughly about a 25% increase over that historical flat level. But again, that changes from year to year. That 25% increase was meant to reset the base, if you will, that was the conversation we had with the council in August about resetting that base. So we looked at factors like the CPI, like a 2% inflation factor, the growth of our taxable base, and ultimately, our recommendation was that 25% roughly increase.
I also may add, too, that the aid to agencies is a little bit different because it's somewhat unrestricted, so some of the other grant programs, you know, this is different because it can be applied to salaries and things like that. Just to show you that there's some nuance there, and I think that's why agencies have really sort of come together around this issue, because it's different than other grant programs. But it is, you know, true, what Jeff has said, and has been, we've been talking about that in our discussions, it's just that this pot is different in that sense. As you can imagine, nonprofit, it can be very vital.
I would just add to that, when looking at individual fundraising, that many times going outside of these funds, they are restricted, and so, and they might be small dollar, you know, a couple of thousand dollars is not small, and yet, if you're looking to be able to grow for those goals and those needs, that's an awful lot of grants that are having to be put together, and there's a limited number of dollars in the private sector for that as well. So I just wanted to mention that, that at the same time that there've been a lot of fundraising efforts, they can't go for some of the things that are desperately needed in terms of operational needs.
Good idea. Go ahead.
I'm just going to say, from a policy standpoint, I think one thing that would be helpful for me to understand from the current council is really where we see ourselves in terms of this framing as kind of the core governmental services and talking about investment in the community. I think Chrissy, you know, tried to really talk about impact in terms of data, right? We want to have data-driven information and understand the impact in a way that is quantifiable in some manner. And so I think the other avenues that Jeff just mentioned, the affordable housing, and I mean, I think even of our climate action grants and our social justice and racial equity grants, I think the city has shown through those programs collectively that we have a policy understanding that we want to support this kind of investment in our community and this kind of work. Personally, I very much appreciate what V said of having a fair and transparent process, and I think, you know, when we look at what the council, the council's role in this is delegating the authority to HCDC to grant these funds in a relatively unrestricted way. And so if we're just talking about what is the size of that pot and what's appropriate to reset it at, again, I'm just kind of looking for consensus on, do we think that that number really was too low and resetting it to the right point? Is it 625? Is it 675? Personally, I'm in favor of, you know, some increase over history, as long as the council uses that process and really does give the authority to HCDC to make those decisions. We've seen ourselves kind of bend over backwards in, you know, a smaller, specific request, and so that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I guess we're, and I appreciate that comment, Laura, because that helps with what I was going to ask. Number one, I'm going to come back to your point in just a minute, but if I could first, I'm interested in asking the coalition, what kinds of requests and/or what kinds of money have you received from other municipalities?
Can we have the county in there as well?
Sure. I'm serious about this, folks. Coralville and North Liberty are each close to 20,000 in population, so when you put them together, they are about 50% of the population of Iowa City. And there comes a point that it is not fair, I know you're all going to say, oh, she doesn't want to spend the money, no, that's not it, it's also about fairness. If they're 50% of the population of this metro area, they should be contributing a significant amount of money. And so if they're not even coming close to what significant amount of money. And so if they're not even coming close to what Iowa City is giving proportionately, I think we've got to have some real serious conversation about how we move forward on this instead of Iowa City always being asked to pick it up.
Becky Reedus, I'm the Executive Director of Community. I think I can answer this a little bit differently than some of my counterpart agencies in that there are food pantries that exist in Coralville and North Liberty. So Coralville and North Liberty do fund both of those food pantries. We do not seek funding for food pantries from Coralville or North Liberty. However, we have a basic needs program. And in that, generally about two-thirds, maybe a bit more of the individuals that receive assistance through our basic needs programs are Iowa City residents. So I take a look at a total program when I'm presenting for funding for multiple entities. And I take a look at the total number of recipients and I break it down very specifically by residency. And that forms the basis for our funding request. You might, Iowa City might get a request out of 100, if I'm going for $100,000, I might ask $70,000 of Iowa City, for instance. I might ask $15,000 from Coralville. I might ask the remainder or close to remainder from North Liberty. There's no guarantee of, of success in meeting that. But we do apply to all, we go after all funding sources. I believe probably most of the nonprofits with me in the audience today would say something similar. So I think our response is a little bit different. So we do go after those requests, but councilman, the, the fact is that the, the larger proportion of our services are provided to Iowa City residents.
I'm Barbara Vinigrade with the Iowa City Free Clinic. I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but over 50%, I think it's 54% of clinic users are Iowa City residents. And we also request funding from Coralville. We, about, I believe 13% of our patients are from Coralville and a relatively small percentage are from North Liberty. But we do get funding from all three of those municipalities. I requested funding for North Liberty for the first time in this fiscal year that we're in now, and we did receive some. Coralville funding has increased slightly over the last five years. And I can give you exact figures if you want. They're in the, in our application as well. But if you'd like exact figures, we receive about 5,500 from Coralville, 1,500 from North Liberty, and until this last year, 15,000 from the city of Iowa City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, if you just, and I'm not saying this is the way it is, but if you looked at it purely on a population basis, you'd be looking, I think roughly, at two-thirds should come from Iowa City and the other third coming from combined Coralville and North Liberty, when you look at an 80 and at 40. And so I'm just kind of curious. Come ahead, Chrissy. I'm just curious. I would also say, while Chrissy's coming up, it, it's interesting to me, and it's not the answer, the solution to this, is how many people live in Iowa City because we have the services in Iowa City versus they might choose to live in North Liberty or Coralville, but the services they need don't exist there. And so when we look at the number of Iowa City residents that are being served, they're also here because of the services. So.
Well, and so much of it is also, how does one prescribe residency? That's different across different systems and becomes obstacles for each of us, given the different funding sources that we're working with. But I'd add, so funding from the other municipalities is a fraction of what the city does provide to shelter house. The county is largely in step with city funding. I don't know, the other part of this is how does that compare with the resources that those entities, those municipal entities have to distribute, right? When we met with Jeff and city staff, we talked, the coalition that is, as far as wanting to make this conversation expand more regionally, we understand that this goes beyond. The city of Iowa City, that's not lost on us. And we know that we have an opportunity, or we believe that we have an opportunity with your leadership to inform that conversation in a different way and to inspire some more bold behavior, frankly. The city of Iowa City is the one community that has a consolidated plan. It is an entitlement community. Each of these organizations plays a vital role in executing and ensuring that that consolidated plan, that strategic plan for addressing the needs of individuals who are lower to modest income, to be able to not just survive, but thrive in our community. We play a vital role in that. We don't have that same kind of tool and vehicle to work out of with those other communities. But given an opportunity, we can certainly make those arguments. It's just that they don't subscribe to the same kind of planning either. So just add.
I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's comments. To get back to your point, Laura, I'm, what I would like to see us do in regard to this is, one, I think this decision needs to be made in the context of the entire budget. And so I think while we all may have ideas in terms of, we want to see the full funding, we want to see some increase, but maybe not the full funding or whatever. I, and I don't care what people have to say tonight, from the standpoint of presenting those positions. But I think a formal, a formal decision kind of related to that should occur probably at our next meeting when we probably have the, the opportunity to talk about the budget because we need to look at where this money would come from. You know, are we comfortable taking more money out of reserves? Do we, you know, what could it do to our tax levy, et cetera? So I think, I think it does need to be decided in the context of the overall budget.
I just want to say something here. You know, no doubt, this organization are providing really essential, critical service to ours, you know, resident in Iowa City. As Vee said, as Vee said, you said that we need to look at this not as a, like charity. I think the same thing. I really think that our contribution to those kind of organizations should not have to be, we don't have, we have to stop looking at it as a charity. We should look at it as just, we need to look at those, you know, those organizations as a vendor who are providing service to our residents of Iowa City. Just think about it, if this organization are not there, like, I'm going to give like few examples. I know there is awesome, a lot of organizations, but what come in my mind right now, like the, the Crisis Center for the Food and the Shelter House and the Free Clinic. If we don't have those organizations there, that means we're going to have a lot of residents in this community who are staying without the basic need such as food, shelter, and, you know, the healthcare or like clinic, go just, it's a right to go to the clinic. Yes, I, I would like the people to think about it as the same thing. Our cities cannot operate without water, without like infrastructure, without road. Same thing. Our city also cannot really operate without our resident having access to food and shelter and healthcare. We really need to find our, we really need to fund our social service agency at the same amount last year we increased it to, or the request that you guys have, which is 675, I think. And I don't think, if we look at this increase and this money comparing to the city budget, is not that huge. It is really like small amount. When I see there is many, like, we invest thousands and millions of dollars in some, another project of the city. And I think this especially, this project is really, really an awesome project which help our vulnerable people in the community who are really in, they need a basic need. Like, this is not like, some is not like for fun. They are not doing like some service that people are not needing. They doing critical services, which is basic need. I think, you know, if we can just increase this like amount and make it like, like this every year, keep it the same amount. Because when I look at the Iowa Project research and they saying that the fund has been decreased to 17%, that's a research saying that, that's like a number who is real. And I think if we, since 2000, if we was increasing it since 2010, by certain amount every year, today we will reach the same amount, which is 600 something. I really support that. We just increase amount that, you know, HCDC requested and I support the full fund. Thank you.
I really appreciate the form that your presentation took. I appreciate enormously that the Agency Impact Coalition has taken the time to come together, to work through this whole process and to come up with a proposal that, that demonstrates that these are a number of agencies that are not only serving our people, but that are working together to provide this continuum of care, as you described it. The other piece that I appreciate is that you're, in looking forward, not just talking about the, the base funding that you're looking for right now, but you're also looking to other stable, permanent means of funding going forward. So sort of creating, creating community in that way as well. There are a couple of numbers that struck me. One was the, in real terms, 17% decrease in funding. The other one that someone mentioned earlier was also the, the increase in population of 11% over, over a more limited number of years. When you put those together, those are substantial numbers. The, it's basically, from my perspective, it's Maslow's, Maslow's Law. If you don't have the basics in life, you can't really focus on anything else. You can't focus on learning. You can't focus on a job. You can't focus on, on moving forward in your life. So I am interested in looking at it in, in, in the context of the overall budget picture. I think it's important that we do that and make sure that as we, as we look at our budget as the city, that it's part of, that it's, that we look at it holistically. I'm also interested in, in looking at it in larger context of what other cities are doing and what the county is doing. So that is, as much as we're doing with the, with the, the new-
Access.
The access, thank you. The access center, that this is something that not only maybe agencies can, can, can approach jointly, but perhaps governmental agencies can, can approach jointly. So basically, I, the need is there. These, you are contributing to the community. And I think this should be part of our overall budget discussion.
I also agree, we should include it in our overall budget discussion, just to see the numbers. I, I do very much appreciate the, I didn't even know the Agency Impact Coalition existed. And I appreciate their information and all the data, as Laura mentioned, about data-driven information. Our, I think our nation and our country people have, have become so data-dependent. They like to see the numbers and the data, the real grit behind what they're trying to make decisions on. People do that in their everyday lives, in their own budgets, in their homes, and, and look at data and what they're using for energy, et cetera. So I do appreciate your report. And I, I also appreciate the, the HCDC because we have appointed these people to this commission to do exactly that, to, to look at these agencies and to divvy out the funds as they see needed. And they've seen over the years, obviously, an increasing need. And, and as the data was shown by the impacts presentation, there is a need out there. But there were some other options mentioned. Vee, you'd mentioned the lost. And we, as a group, have talked about that many times. We, we of course, kind of had blinders on and were thinking of, for road use, because Cedar Rapids uses their lost, most of their lost funding for road use. But, but this is obviously a big community need here. And, and I just really appreciate the comment. I don't remember who said that, that these agencies are, these plans, it's for individuals not to just survive, but to thrive. And I think, and, and as everyone has alluded to, we want the members in our community to thrive, no matter what their income level is or who they are. So I think that that is something. And that would go along with our budget, more of our budget decision, rather than just saying flat out now, this is how much we want to, want to do.
I guess for me, I, what I hear is definitely that we're going to have continued discussion about this. Counselors, we do have two more meetings before we have to actually finalize the budget. So the fourth and the 18th is when we will have the, the finalization, I guess, for scheduled council meetings because of some of the things that we have to get for state documents and that type of stuff and public hearing obligations. So just as a point of reminder. As I think about this, I actually am happy that Jeff made comment because he talked about the global of what we've done here within our community. And so when I hear about the winter shelter, the access center, the 1108 building, 1105 building, I know is something, the affordable housing, that, it really, really makes me happy that our community actually has done a lot. When I think of a human rights city, these are the elements, as Counselor Weiner talked about, you know, Maslow hierarchy. And so I'm very happy to hear all the things that we have done. What I do know is that for the aid to agencies, I would have to agree with, with Vee, it is a little different. This is where we're talking about the, the impact for the services, for them to be activated. There's an employment element to a lot of this. And, you know, fundings are very different. I'm not going to even try to compare federal funding matches, other community matches. What I do know is that within our community, we pride ourselves in ensuring that we take care of everyone within this community. And we're talking about, you know, the basic needs of individuals in, in this continuum of care. I love that model where you all show the continuum of care. It really does touch base on all the needs of those within our community that are less fortunate or really do need help. We all have our personal stories and I won't go into mine, but I can tell you that our agencies do make a difference in our community. So for me, I know we, we're going to wait to the fourth and to the 18th. But, you know, I am beyond convinced that we need to increase the funding for our aid to agencies. And so, and so that's where I am. And where we are, I, I do believe, as Counselor Berg has talked about, you know, we need to look at this from a policy point of view. You know, how do we, if we're going to do this, how do we make it sustainable? And I believe that we do have to have those conversations as counselors. But I think we do need to also be aggressive in what we're going to do to make sure that the individuals that are on the, they are the ones that are doing the work. We need affordable housing and, you know, all these structures to house people. We need that. But when I think of social workers, everyone within these agencies, I consider them to be social workers. They are navigating the system to make life, things that we, a lot of us just take advantage, that we just have. We have, you know, all these opportunities. And so for me, I'm looking forward to the conversation on the fourth and/or the 18th, where we further our discussion. So, yeah.
I'm supportive of the, the request for the 675,000. I, it is interesting, really useful presentation that was made in terms of the, the collective actions, the 500 employees that make up those services. The city of Iowa City has 600 employees roughly. So that's a vast network of services that are being provided by the agencies. And, you know, I think as, as I mentioned earlier, presenting them as a collective, in their collective community impact, I think is really useful and I hope will help with the, the contributions that will be coming from the community. Because I'm concerned that the state and federal levels are fragile as well. So, you know, I do feel your, your impact on the community needs to be understood by the community. And that will also help with the funding efforts. But I think it's clear, the city of Iowa City is, has strived to be a leader on these issues. And I would add transportation to all the other things that were mentioned. So equity plays a very big role in Iowa City. And I think this is an important piece that needs to be corrected.
Yes.
So would it be, would- So, would council be in agreement that maybe we can put this on the February fourth meeting, just to continue some budget items then?
Yeah, I think I have a couple of requests for staff, but I would want to get your all buy-in before I ask for that. One would be to quantify those things that Jeff mentioned of, kind of, what are all these different mechanisms of support, and what are those buckets, right? Because they may have different funding sources, or they may come out of different funds, but what we could characterize and what we could articulate to the community as, you know, promoting those types of services, not just the aid to agencies. But I think that would be really helpful, if that's something staff thinks they could pull together for that global discussion. And then, also, the question of just where H C D C's role is. I'm wondering if, and V, maybe I could put you on the spot, if you feel like the commission has kind of the right parameters for the scope of what we're talking about, given that this funding has changed even just that big jump, the one year. Do you feel like you have adequate direction? I think staff was kind of recommending a different direction, and so I'm just-
What exactly do you mean, in terms of parameters?
Yeah, is the commission's charge from the council and the city appropriate for the scope of really what we're talking about and the types of services that we're helping to fund?
I mean, I can speak for the commission that we're on right now, the commissioners that I have, and the process that we've been through with the Agency Impact Coalition and other organizations, that I think we've learned a lot. And I feel fairly confident that, I am also really for process and transparency. I think that we understand our role in terms of what we need to bring to you, and that some of the changes that we have made have really incorporated a lot of staff comment, which I think has kind of leveled the playing field there. So, I feel like we're very comfortable in our role, and now that we have the Agency Impact Coalition and our other organizations, I feel like there's a real clear channel of communication, and also with council. So, this has been very illuminating for us and a great learning process. I mean, I don't want to speak for all of us, but I feel like we've kind of gotten to a point where I think we feel comfortable with where we're at.
You don't feel like you're kind of off on your own making recommendations that aren't fitting into the framework of what the commission is supposed to do?
I don't think so, and I think that it also fits into the larger goals of the city. I think that what we do is we try and make sure, and I've had conversations with some of our agencies as well, that, you know, they really want to help fulfill the seven goals. So, how can they do that? How can they, you know, incorporate into their services aspects of that? So, like I said, I think that we have a really good working relationship, and I think that the role that we play is, I will say that today, it's way better than when I first stepped in two years ago. I felt like it was blinders, and now I feel like we actually have a process that staff and agencies and the commission have really worked hard to make it feel like, you know, people aren't on the chopping block, we're not making decisions in isolation, and that there's a real fair and inclusive process. So, that's kind of how I feel. I think that we're pretty well-charged at this point, and the commission, even beyond the people that are a part of it, I think has a better understanding of its role.
I just want to say something final before you close this. You know, I know that, you know, the city staff already proposed, but yet for us, that would reduce the tax six cent. And I know that most of the council are for the reduction of the tax. Even though it's only six cent, I always think that our residents not going to feel it. And if I said, "Don't reuse it, make it, like, leave it alone," yes, you know, don't increase it, don't reduce it. But maybe the city manager are going to say, or the finance person, they will tell me the six cent is from the, I guess, the debt service levy. I understand that you cannot use this money to give out, like, another money, but we are using, like, from the general fund, some money to do some kind of project. Instead, we can just bond for that, make it for the debt service levy, and use this money, and don't reduce tax, don't increase tax, leave it alone. Yes, as it is, our residents not going to feel that. Anyway, you just take this with you, and when we come back during the budget, maybe we can think about this, so we are not going to interrupt the budget of the city. If there's going to be interruption, if you cannot find something else. I just propose that to the council.
If I could add one thing, is that the other piece that I found, that I think gives a fair amount of structure and certainty now, is folding the existing agencies into the city steps process, and having this five-year window, so that there's a certain amount of certainty, and agencies can know what to expect, certainly for a two-year period, but probably further on. So, that, to me, is an important part of the process, and I do believe that whatever level we end up at, that process and then sticking to those goals and those budget levels will be important going forward.
I know Counselor Burgess had made a recommendation, but need other council support to request that Jeff do some quantifying of kind of the global thing, so-
I think we've gotten that before, and I'm sure he can update if there's any need to update.
All right, so, yep. All right, I just wanted to make sure we have that support. So, thank you.
I think V had one last question.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, for the local option sales tax, when we're thinking long-term, is there some way we can start that conversation, or is there something that you would need from H C D C? Or, you know, like, I know it's kind of a large conversation, but just trying to think small baby steps, you know, what would that process look like, or how could we work with staff or, you know, Agency Impact Coalition? Just trying to get a feel for that, if that's possible.
Yeah, what I would say that, V, is I think we're going to be discussing that probably in quite a bit of detail here shortly, in terms of some of the other planning for the city, in terms of stability for the budget, as you talked about. You know, you may realize that we're one of, we're the only metropolitan area in the state that doesn't have it. I think one of the, some of the discussion that we will have to have at that point is what does the actual ordinance language look like in terms of how much do we tie our hands in terms of where that money goes? We've looked at what various cities have done, and what gives you the best chance of getting that percentage that you need at the ballot. And so, what I think we have to do is, in talking with staff and the council discussion, talking with communities, the community and agencies, et cetera, that all have their various interests, is trying to make a final decision that gives us the best opportunity to make sure it gets passed.
Sure.
Which might mean that it doesn't include it being all sliced and diced, the way some people would want, because what we've seen happen with some communities is you slice it and dice it too much, and you get somebody that says, "I don't like that five percent, so I'm going to vote against it. I don't like that ten percent, so I'm going to vote against it." So, it's that balance of having some structure to it, but having it fluid enough so that we can get the votes. So, we'll have that discussion certainly going forward.
I would just like to propose, in my conversations with the Agency Impact Coalition, I feel like they really see potential in partnering in terms of, you know, the services that they provide, Iowa City are very robust and community-invested. So, even when you're thinking about, you know, I know a lot of lost, it can be like, "Oh, well, we're doing parks and rec," and so, the community sees, "Oh, we have better parks." When you're thinking about, you know, the agencies and what they provide, they could really be great partners in saying, "This is what we provide," and so, it's sort of a win-win. I just know there's been a lot of conversation about the benefit of having our agencies, and how some sort of, like, you know, awareness campaign or local option sales could be helpful in that. So, just to kind of add that to your conversation.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I want to thank all the commissioners for coming out today and being a part of the conversation, and also for the Agency Impact-
Coalition.
Coalition, for also coming out today. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While they are transitioning off, I did at least want to just make mention of some of the Mas talked about. So, as far as, like, our ability to change the tax rate, that has to be set by January twenty-eighth, which is before the next council meeting, so I just wanted to at least make that notation, so that it is aware.
Mayors, we're getting settled. Can I chime in real quick on-
Please do.
-the funding mechanism? At your next council meeting, you need to set the public hearing on your maximum tax rate. So, that's part of the new legislation that was passed last year. This is a new step. Therefore, we have to publish that maximum tax rate for your next meeting.
It would have to be done before.
Because we're setting the public hearing, so when you set the public hearing, you have to put it out, put that tax rate out there, and that's the maximum, so you cannot go up. So, if the council has an interest in raising the tax rate to fund an increase, we need to know that tonight. My suggestion, and of course, we had talked about this scenario coming into the meeting, is that we would not suggest that you use the tax rate to fund an increase. We do budget a surplus. This fiscal year budget that you have proposes a seventy thousand dollar surplus, but we are also over slightly our target reserve level. So, our maximum target general fund reserve is thirty-five percent, and we're about thirty-six percent now. So, for a funding increase of the scale that you're talking about, what we would suggest is we use that surplus, and then we use some one-time funds to bridge the gap this year, and then we incorporate that as a goal going into the fiscal year twenty-two budget, so that we can maintain that level and not see a drop. And again, if you're willing to set that priority for your fiscal year twenty-two budget right now, I don't see any problem in using the one-time funds that we have to bridge that gap, and that way you're not getting into tax rate discussions.
Okay, you mean you think you have a ways, as you mentioned, all those kind of opportunity for this year?
Yes.
And also, you have a way to do it next year, hopefully?
Hopefully, yes. I mean, that becomes a top priority, because you don't want this to be a pendulum, where the, you know, one year it's up and one year it's down.
Okay.
So, that's a priority, and you'll, as you know, you'll have a number of priorities going into next budget. We'll just have to really make that commitment here to bridge that gap. But we're talking, depending on where you land, a hundred thousand or so.
I believe if you can figure it out, you know, we don't need to do anything. That's my personal, you know, really, if you can figure it out, then we don't need to change tax, or we don't have to go through those kind of things, you know?
So, I think the option is allow staff to work within the current tax levy, sorry, tax rate that we've established. If you want to give yourself that other option, we can publish a higher tax rate-
No.
-and then scale it back, but I think that's going to cause a lot of confusion-
Yes.
... and angst in the community.
I'd rather stay where we are.
Yeah.
Stay the same thing if you can figure it out. We don't have to do anything.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, great. Well, on the fourth of February, we'll have it on the agenda to have more discussion. All right, so we're going to move on to, we're going to be having a University of Iowa Student Government joint meeting with council, and that's going to be February eleventh. And today, we want to talk about what topics we might want to discuss with the U I S G.
Yeah, so, I guess, thanks. Good to be back with you all, and welcome new council members. So, yeah, so I guess, just to preface the conversation here, Austin and I really want the conversation, is that two weeks from now, two weeks from now, to be productive. And so, we really want to pick, you know, specific agenda items that are going to, you know, progress the conversation and make it productive overall. So, I sent you all an email before I went off to break, so you should have had time to look over the results of the survey, but there was considerable attention on affordable housing, as always. Also, carbon output, looking at climate action steps, and also, physical safety of students was something that I was surprised by, as far as, you know, interested in talking about that with you all. But, yeah, I know graduate and undergraduate student government members are very excited to have your undivided attention at this joint meeting, and so, yeah, I just wanted to get some input from you all as to other items that you'd like to add to the agenda.
I think the ones that the students want are the most important ones.
Sure.
I don't know if others have-
Well, I certainly agree with, you know, the three top priorities should be discussed. I would add, perhaps, you know, are there special areas geographically in Iowa City that are of concern to you, in whatever, for whatever reason that they might be a concern? So, I mean, the three we're talking about, I mean, physical safety might be an example of that, actually, where specifically, what are we talking about? I mean, I think it's possible to take any one of those three and try to be more specific about what it is the concern is.
Right, yeah, and I guess that's kind of what I wanted to get from all of you, is looking at those, you know, those common, those themes as, you know, big umbrellas, and just, you know, just to have that on the agenda, items from you, like, things to talk about, I don't know, things that you guys have been working on in the city, you know, on that side of things, just to kind of start the conversation there. And obviously, at the joint meeting, I mean, it's just going to be, you know, a big old conversation, so nothing's going to be voted on, very casual, laid-back, just an opportunity to have some open conversation. So, just like something to kind of get the conversation moving, if there are any, you know, specific things you wanted to make sure to talk about that address these issues.
I was thinking that one item that wasn't listed, but kind of goes along with all of those, is the parking issue. That's a big issue, and I know it's a concern of students and residents also in the city, but I know students especially, probably, they come in with a car and they don't know what to do with it then. So, we might have some discussion on that, their thoughts, and what they think the city might be able to do to help them with that.
Yeah, definitely.
As a point of reference, like, for the physical safety of students, I wonder if, I mean, we may be able to kind of come in on that, but I wonder if maybe we wouldn't have someone from the police department? Because I know we have the downtown officer, Andy, that might be able to-
Yeah, we'll, I'm just taking notes here, we'll have kind of our subject matter staff experts present that night.
Sure.
So, police, it sounds like climate action, N D S on affordable housing, we'll have folks there to help you out.
Awesome. One thing that I would love to hear about, and I don't know what the counselors think, is we hear that the students kind of stay downtown, and we would love to find out what are some of those barriers for getting them in other parts of the community. So, at least, me personally, I would love to know, what would it take to get them, you know, to the parts of the community?
One thing that has come up in some recent conversations with students that I've had, some of them were door-knocking, or various presidential candidates, and I was surprised at how articulate they were on the question of affordable housing. So, one of the ways that conversation could be framed would be housing preference. You know, I heard some preferences from students in terms of what type of housing they would be interested in, including options such as co-living, for lack of a better word, you know, where you have shared common spaces, but, which can include kitchens, for example. That ties into the affordability issue. So, what, beyond the sort of housing types that we see, what are some thoughts of the students, as well as with, within the conventional framework that we often deal with, you know, of buildings up to three stories, perhaps up to six stories, and then our high-rises? How do students feel about those options?
And as far as the structure of the meeting, what is the length of time for the meeting itself?
Yes, so, the U I S G, you know, normal meetings usually go from seven to nine, you know, that's a cap at nine, and then there's committee time after that. So, definitely no longer than two hours. I'm not sure, you know, if it would get to that length. But, yeah, we would just have, you know, kind of introductions and go through an agenda. Austin and I are going to draft up an agenda, and then we can send it off to you, just to, you know, see a draft of the final agenda, and if there's anything that you all would like to change, we can address that at the next city council meeting. And, yeah, just, yeah, I mean, I'll send you a final agenda, so you can kind of see how the process will go, but, yeah, definitely not over two hours for that.
Okay. It would be helpful for our counselors to know how much time we'll have, so we can govern ourselves accordingly.
I think as far as, sorry, just subject matter, a lot of the themes I was seeing, well, obviously, the waste management was a high one of the second and third priorities, and it looked like from the individual comments, specifically recycling and compost. So, Jeff, I think if we can have some information- I think if we can have some information, I think it's a great opportunity just to share, you know, what, what's available, what we're already doing, directions we can go in addressing some of those concerns, I just want to make sure that one's on the list for having some information available.
Great. Any other thoughts on this topic?
No, I mean, I think that sounds good, as far as public safety, or, you know, physical safety, I know that, you know, this was more in the renters' guide comments, but we saw a lot of concern about, you know, snow removal and ice and things like that, especially for students who are maybe living farther off campus, or even at the apart, you know, apartment complexes, and so maybe also touching on that topic might be a good idea. But no, other than that, yeah, I think that's great, and yeah, Austin and I will get back to you, send you a, a draft of the final agenda, and yeah, we look forward to having, hosting you all at the Iowa Morale Union coming up here, so thank you.
We're looking forward to it, thank you, yes. All right, moving right along, clarification of agenda items.
I've got, one, it's not so much a clarification, but just kind of let people know, when we get to item number 12, repealing the moratorium, given that the delay in this was council-instigated, I am going to propose that we consolidate the second and third readings and get this done tonight.
Does, can we do that during the?
We can do it, it will require a supermajority, and so I just want to see a nod of heads of.
I don't think we need to do a nod of heads now, do we? I mean, I.
I mean, we can certainly, if you want to.
I mean, I can make the motion.
Yep, first.
And, and somebody can second it, and then if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay.
Sure.
Sounds good to me. Any other agenda item?
It's kind of a light agenda, which is nice.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
We have.
The second time, Laura.
Yeah, we have new counselors, it was done just for them.
Yes.
We're going to ease you into it.
Yeah, exactly.
It had nothing to do with me, no.
Welcome.
Yes. All right. If there's nothing else on agenda items, we'll move it, move forward to Info Packet, January 9th. We'll move on, am I moving too quick?
No.
Move on to Info Packet, January 16th.
I'm okay with the summer meeting schedule, IP8. I don't know if we.
Let me.
Thought I looked through everything, but that one.
Sorry.
Yes, I told you, we need that phone. I don't have to ask your channel anymore.
So, our counselor is able to see?
Yeah, that looks fine to me.
So for, for the council members who haven't gone through this, occasionally we'll change our meeting schedule in the summer, cancel a meeting based on vacations or something, but what I'm suggesting here is that we go to an every-three-week schedule, as opposed to every-two-week, and just realize, for those of you that will be around, if something urgent comes up and we need to, to get a vote on a specific item, oftentimes to approve a, a project, or what, that has a time-sensitive issue with it, we'll call a special meeting, usually last five or 10 minutes, but we'll get the vote and we'll move on.
Okay. Okay, that works for people, seems like. Any other item from Info Packet, January 16th? All right, I think we'll move on to council updates on assignment boards, commissions, and committees, and not to put Pauline on the spot, hopefully in the future, I'll kind of give people fair warning, but we're going to be just kind of rotating this way, so we started with Maz the last time, and so today we'll start with Pauline.
Well, I don't have any report on really any of the, my assigned committees, the, all of us, I think almost all of us, were at the joint entities meeting, so we all kind of know what we discussed at that, it was pretty short and sweet agenda as usual, so I really have nothing else as far as assigned boards or commissions.
The boards to which I'm assigned have not yet met, at least with me on them.
I attended a ICAD board meeting on January 10th, and I think you all are probably aware that Mark Nolte is moving on, and so the board will be undertaking a search for new executive director, and there was a very nice farewell to him on the 17th also.
Which most of us missed because of the weather.
I was very grateful to be downtown at that time and just be able to shuffle over. And then I attended a UNESCO City of Literature meeting on the 14th, and we're undertaking some strategic planning.
No, no meetings have been held?
I haven't had any, we have JEC meeting this Friday, so.
All right, so the only thing that I've had outside, well, I had the assessors' meeting, and that was, as, we just kind of went through that today, and then today, earlier today, I did the partnership for alcohol safety, had a meeting there, other than that, that was really kind of an introduction meeting, giving me a little history about how the, how the partnership kind of started, and kind of where we plan to go here in the future, so outside of that, no other committees for me.
You don't have any?
All right, great. Well, if there's nothing else for now, we will be adjourned into our 7:00 PM formal meeting.
Sure, thanks.
Welcome to the Iowa City City Council Agenda for the formal meeting in January 21st, 2020. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Sollee?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, well, welcome to your city council. And we are to your city hall. And we're happy to see so many people here with us today. I know that we have some individuals who are gonna celebrate today as well from the school's system. And I know that there is individuals here that may want to come up and talk to us. I did wanna just, as a point of housekeeping, just let people know that when you do come and talk to us, we'll ask you to state your name. And in the back, there is a little sticker that you can fill out to write your name. So when you go there, you don't have to write it down. You can just stick it down. So I just wanted to give that a little housekeeping piece there for you. All right, so we have some students here from Lemmy Elementary. And I'm gonna come out here and invite you all up to the stage. All right, well, I'm so happy for you all to be here today. And these are students that have been seen as outstanding, and we're excited for you to be here today. I wanna start maybe with your name so that you can announce it to all the audience.
Abigail Sigafus.
Thank you.
Katerina Satlander.
Mark Elwer.
All right, so happy that all of you are here today with us. And so I'm gonna, I know that you have some things that you wanna say to us. And so I'll probably start with you. And this is Abigail.
Hi, I'm Abigail Sigafus, and I attend Lemmy Elementary. I think that a leader is someone who is willing to help others and to get help from others as well. A leader has to understand that they don't always have to know everything, and they need to be able to admit that they can't do something and to ask for help. Some of my classmates sometimes ask me for help, and I'm always willing to assist. At school, I like participating in activities like Safety Patrol and Student Council. I always enjoy lending a hand, especially when it comes to helping my teachers set up the monthly Science Night activities. In addition, I volunteer at my church for setting things up for younger kids and sometimes playing music in the service. I'm very honored to be receiving this award. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Abigail. I'm gonna step right in between. And then we're gonna hear from you, Kat.
Hi, my name is Ellen Katerina Satlander, and I'm truly honored to be receiving this award today. Why I think my peers nominated me is because not only do I do things like Safety Patrol and Student Council, but I also love being someone who others can come to whenever they need help. Leadership to me doesn't mean being the most popular or the smartest. It means being kind, respectful, and supportive to anyone and everyone. Thank you.
And we are to you, Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark Elwer. The first thing I would like to say is I am very thankful to receive this award. I would like to thank my wonderful parents, my teachers, and my scout leaders, and my peers for being awesome. I think I got this award because I always do what my teachers ask and will provide help to those who need it. I also try to be a good friend to everyone. As my class was discussing what a good leader does and looks like and acts like, I recognized a lot of points from the Scout Law. So being a leader to me is not just about being a good citizen, but also about being a good Boy Scout. Thank you all for listening.
Well, I have to tell you, I'm very impressed with all of your stories that you share with us today. It sounds like you all are very responsible and very caring individuals that serve our community and others well. So thank you so much for being with us today and being a part of this time where we recognize and celebrate you. So I'm gonna give each of you a certificate, and I'm gonna read it. And it's the Student Leadership Award. And each one of, each of these will have your own individual names, but I'm gonna read it. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Lemmy Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize each of you. And that is definitely recognizing you, Kat, as well as Abigail and Mark. As an outstanding student leader, your community is proud of you. And this is presented today by the Iowa City City Council in January 2020. Thank you so much. That is yours? That is yours? Thank you much. These are always great times when we can celebrate our youngsters in our community. Yes, all right. So we're gonna move on to some, to item number three, which are proclamations. And we have two today. All right. The first proclamation. Whereas in 1848, people gathered together in Seneca Falls, New York, and cited the unfairness of depriving women of the right to vote. And whereas the right for women's suffrage from the First Women's Rights Convention to enfranchisement lasted more than 72 years. And whereas Iowa women, by the thousands, advocated for the right to vote, and suffragists nationwide turned to public education and persuasion. They held conferences, campaigned, lobbied, marched, petitioned, and suffered public disdain, And now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the calendar year 2020 to be the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration. And Iowa City, therefore citizens of Iowa City, shall enjoy the freedom of voter participation, continue to fight for voting rights for all citizens, and celebrate this important milestone.
We've got Polly Horton and Galen and Tony Warbider to accept.
Good evening, I'm Polly Horton. I'm on the State of Iowa League of Women Voters Board.
Awesome. And I'm gonna have you come up and accept this. Yep?
She has a comment to read.
And I'm Tony Warbider, a member of the League of Women Voters.
Awesome.
I'm Galen Warbider. I'm on the State Board and a member of the local Johnson County chapter. And I have this response. On behalf of the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration, 50/50 in 2020, the Iowa Women's Foundation and the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, we thank you for passing this proclamation. After 100 years of struggle, the ratification of the 19th Amendment in 1920 was and is a monumental achievement, one that merits attention, education, and promotion throughout Iowa and the nation. The gains hard won. The status not done. The future is calling to help learn from the past. The City of Iowa City has heard this call and answered. Thank you.
We have another proclamation. Whereas on this day, January 16th, 2020, we commemorate the enactment of the Virginia State for Religious Freedom on January 16th, 1786, written by Thomas Jefferson and championed by James Madison. This legislation was the forerunner to the approach to religion and government taken by the farmers of the Constitution in 1787 and the First Amendment in 1789. And whereas today we understand that religious freedom is a fundamental American and human right, we acknowledge that religion, freedom, is a cornerstone of democracy. We declare that religious freedom is not a privilege for the few, but a right for all. We embrace that this fundamental right applies to people of all and of no religious affiliations or beliefs. And whereas, we further recognize that the statute insists on equality as a guiding and governing principle. It specifies that one's religious identity or lack thereof should be neither an advantage nor a disadvantage under the law. To this end, the Virginia statute declared, "All men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion, and that the same shall in no wise diminish, enlarge, or affect their civil capacities." Jefferson later said that religious freedom encompasses the Jew and the Gentile, the Christian and the Mahometan, Hindu and infidel of every denomination. And whereas, we hold that these principles are not only foundational, but remain essential to the health and future of our democracy. To that end, these principles shall guide and inform judicial decisions, legislation, and public policymaking at all levels of government. Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim January 16th to be the Religious Freedom Day and call on all people in Iowa City to commemorate the enactment of the Virginia statute and its role in shaping one of the highest aspirations of the American experiment, religious freedom.
Here to accept are Ann Ben Dixon and Kenesha Ensminger.
Great, I'm gonna have you all come up and receive this. I'll have you come up, and then I'll have you speak, if that's okay? Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Great, and then you can go and state your name and please speak.
I'm Ann Ben Dixon. The atheist and nonreligious community of the greater Iowa City area appreciates the city and Mayor Teague issuing this proclamation. As religious freedom doesn't belong to any one group, it belongs to everyone. True religious freedom in this country should be celebrated as something that protects our right to worship, but also our right to be free from religion. In recent years, some have tried to lead us to believe that religious freedom means that they can use their deeply held beliefs to infringe on the civil rights of others. We are hopeful that by having a group of atheists request this proclamation, we can show that this is not the kind of religious freedom we need today. We need religious freedom to be about love, about inclusion, about understanding. By agreeing to issue this proclamation, Mayor Teague, you are announcing to every citizen of Iowa City that the government here respects the religious freedom of all and that religious beliefs will not be allowed to be used as a weapon in our city. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Great.
As a proud black woman that not only identifies as an atheist, but also as a member of the LGBTQ community, I have seen the dangers that a weaponized version of religious freedom poses, and am so happy to see the City of Iowa City step up and say that that won't be tolerated. Being part of these marginalized communities has shown me that the only way our country moves forward is with understanding and acceptance. We can have our theological differences and our political differences, but we must never use those differences to harm one another. Our country is better when everyone's religious freedom is respected. The City of Iowa City will be better when every citizen, whether atheist, Christian, Muslim, Hindu, Wiccan, pagan, or of any other faith respective, knows that they can live freely without the fear of having their religious freedom threatened by the weaponized religion of someone else. Thank you again, Mayor and City of Iowa City.
All right, we are moving down to the next agenda item, which is the Consent Calendar. I have a motion to approve Consent Calendars as amended.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor. I just, I wanted to just comment on, on one of the correspondence issues. Is that okay? Just 9F on the Dear Management. We're getting a lot of communication about that, and of course, we had some comment at our last meeting about it, and kind of turned into a he said, she said sort of comments. Okay. Just talking about our correspondence 9F, which had to do with the Dear Management program. And I'd said we'd received a lot of correspondence about that last time and this time. And I wanted some clarification as to when White Buffalo will be doing the second round, and if maybe prior to them doing the second round, we could have discussion, like get a work session or something about what we've been hearing and what we maybe should clarify with White Buffalo on our expectations. Would that be possible? Or anybody else have any concerns about that? If not, that's fine.
I don't. I think there's some people that are either misinformed or intentionally putting out some false information about what, about White Buffalo is doing.
Counsel sets the work session agenda. If you wanna talk about it, staff can present. White Buffalo will be back in town. I don't have an exact date at my fingertips here, but I think it's the week of either the 17th or 24th of February, late February, they'll be back to do the final round of sharpshooting. Again, I'm happy to get you information individually or collectively as a group, if you wanna dedicate work session time to that topic.
We can just talk about individually, perhaps? Jeff, thanks.
Okay. All right, we are gonna move on to the community comment. And this is a time where people within the community can certainly come up to the podium there. And we'll ask that you state your name, as well as sign in. And in the back, as I mentioned earlier, there are stickers that you can kind of stick there. And we ask that people keep their comments to three to five minutes.
Hello, Mayor Teague and Counsel.
Your name, please?
Brandon Ross.
Thank you.
It's a tough question. In the spirit of the day where we commemorate the 19th Amendment, I'd like to just remind people, we have a council with five women and two men, which I think is pretty special. It's never been done before in this town. That's the most women we've had on the council. I think that's cool. I also saw that, that a woman who spoke previously had a Hawkeye jersey on, and "Go Hawks", "Go Hawks". And our Hawkeye Women Basketball Team has won six in a row, and is now ranked. And every year that I can remember, Lisa Bluder, the coach of the Hawkeyes, has had a great team. And you can't say that about our football team. And wonder why Lisa Bluder, you know, you have to think about, why is Lisa Bluder, why is, maybe she should get paid a little bit more? And maybe the football coach a little less? Everybody could be happy, equal pay for women. I really believe in that. So basketball, football coaches, guys, you know, come on. You know, Lisa Bluder is a genius out there compared to some of those coaches. I played basketball in high school and college. I thought I had to mention that. Martin Luther King Day this, this week, I think it's important to remember some things about Dr. King. He did say, but oftentimes, the corporate media just puts it under the carpet that capitalism rewards the few off the backs of the many. Dr. King was a firm believer in this. He believed that capitalism was unjust and that the working classes, the ones who are really working, and the poor, and the handicapped, and the women, and elderly, are all at the mercy of a system that does not work. He believed that. At the time, there was civil rights, there was the passing LBJ's Medicare and Medicaid, there were things that were improving. There was a very progressive candidate, an FDR kind of candidate named Robert Kennedy, who was also unfortunately, tragically, just like Dr. King, also assassinated. So I'd just like to remember just those things about Dr. King and who I believe is a great American. And you listen to any speeches of his, now we have access, any speech of his is so worthwhile. Now finally, I would just like to bring up this. To the naked eye, this looks little more than a can of sardines, which counsel is, in fact, a can of sardines. And I wanna bring up the can of sardines because I believe that on February 3rd, for those of you who happen to be Democrats, are the caucuses, and that the caucuses should be filled, should be filled with people, so that it's really tightened there, like this can of sardines. Now, some of you don't like fish, I'm okay with that. But, so I am asking the counsel to do whatever you can to make that day help arms of the government to have freedom for people to be able to say they wanna go to the caucus and not have to work that day. Dr. King would believe that we have to be all-inclusive, but the working classes are oftentimes the ones who aren't represented at the caucuses, so it tends to be a little bit of a class situation. So I ask the counsel, and also private businesses too, out there if you're listening, to allow any workers to be able to have this time, just like in the Presidential Election Day. We should have that off. It's great that Dr. King has a day, and we do get that off. And I think that if Dr. King were here today, that he would say, "Caucus Day, everybody should be free to vote, just as, you know, as much as possible. It shouldn't be so difficult." And now we know that with the voter suppressions that go on, we need to push back. So I ask the counsel to maybe be in contact or to make that an open statement, that the caucus day, February 3rd, is very important, and people should get out there. Whether you're voting for X, Y, or Z, that's not the issue. Thank you so much, Iowa City City Counsel.
Thank you, Brandon. I have a comment about the Rochester Avenue thing. Should I wait till then? Yes, we'll bring it up. So if there is an item on the agenda, there'll be a public comment section then. I should have mentioned that. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Saying there are none, thank you all for being here today. All right, we're gonna move on to item number 11. And we're gonna go with 11A, Annexation, American Legion Road. This is a resolution to annex approximately 35.29 acres of land located north of American Legion Road and east of Eastbrook Street. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll do public discussion. Would anyone like to address this? Mayor, members of council, John Yap, representing the applicant, just here to answer any questions you may have. This was an item that was deferred from 12/17/19, and it actually goes along with the Resona and American Legion Road, which is next on our agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. All right, thank you. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Moving on to item number 11B. This is Resona, American Legion Road. Ordinance conditionally resounding approximately 35.29 acres of land located north of American Legion Road and east of Eastbrook Street from county residential zone to interim development, single-family residential zone. This is a pass and adopt. May I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance? So moved. And public discussion. Would anyone like to address this topic? Counsel discussion. Seeing there is none, roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Seven to, seven, seven to zero. All right, we're moving on to item number 12. And this is the repeal of the rental permit moratorium, moratorium. And this ordinance repealing ordinance number 194793, a temporary moratorium on new rental permits for single-family and duplex units. This is second consideration.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
All right, so we have a move by Mem, seconded by Taylor, for the waiver of the second consideration for pass. Yes?
Production.
Yeah.
I'll just explain, yeah, my rationale for this. This was, this originally came before council, I think at our, I believe our first meeting in December. And the initiation for deferral was actually from council ourselves in terms of allowing more time to look at some options to deal with the more, the permitting for rental permits. I think during that time, we have come to the conclusion that staff has given us what they feel are, all that they can do, or all that we can do as council in terms of regulations, et cetera. Not that we don't still wanna stay on top of this and look at this, but our original premise, when we put the moratorium in place, was that, I remember some councils, some council members wanted it shorter, staff actually wanted it longer to make sure they had enough time. But the agreement, I believe really from the beginning, was that as soon as we had done what we felt we could do, that we would lift the moratorium. And that has been done. It was deferred for a month on staff, or excuse me, on council action. And so I think now we really owe it to people who, and there was at least a couple people who really had some significant deadlines. And that's one of the reasons I wanna see us consolidate these last two votes tonight. I guess I'm good.
Would anyone from the public like to address this comment or this item? Anyone from council?
No, I agree, council members, because among other things, I believe part of the reason was to allow new council members to address this issue. We have, count, uh...
We have council member Burgess and I have now had a chance to look at it carefully as well.
I just want to say, in general, I think collapsing readings, we need to be careful when there's been an issue that has been controversial, which I would say this one has been. But because there were the multiple deferrals at the front end, I'm comfortable collapsing and passing now.
I would agree.
And I totally agree with you, Laura. And our history on the council has been that when there are controversial items, we typically do not consolidate the votes. I agree.
Yeah, I, of course, had been one of the council members to be asking for deferral... And asking for those deferrals. I had mentioned that we could... We could do the collapse later in the process. So at this point, it seems like the appropriate thing to do.
OK, we're going to do roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Move final adoption at this time?
Ms.?
Second.
All right, moved by Ms., seconded by Celi. Public discussion? Counsel discussion?
I just wanted to mention some of the correspondence. If you saw the surveys that were filled out by the residents, that was also something that was initiated by Nancy Carlson. I think it's useful on these issues which do impact neighborhoods to have, you know, in this case, a little bit better understanding of what the situation is on the ground for those residents, how they're responding to the conditions, and how this, you know, what's happened on Jefferson Street is affecting them. So I want to thank Nancy for doing that.
Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next on the item is item number 13.
Mayor, can we get a motion to accept correspondence?
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
So moved.
Moved by Ms., seconded by Celi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, we're moving on to item number 13. And this is Rochester Avenue Reconstruction. This is a resolution establishing the design elements necessary to begin design and engineering documents for the Rochester Avenue Reconstruction Project.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Moved by Ms., seconded by Weiner. And we're going to move to public discussion.
Staff presentation, I think, first.
Sure.
I have a presentation.
All right, staff, great.
Mayor Teague, council members. My name is Jason Reichert. I'm with the City Engineering Division. So tonight, I'm going to go over the Rochester Avenue Reconstruction Project, try my best to summarize what we have done to date and where we stand now with the resolution, adopting design elements and moving into design. Give you a little bit of a background. Rochester Avenue serves as an important east-west arterial street in Iowa City that sees approximately 7,000 vehicles per day. The pavement has reached the end of its useful life and requires frequent maintenance. Just to give you a little more information, the pavement management software that the city uses recommends reconstruction of this corridor, giving it a city PCI of 24, which falls into the poor rating. That rating is from zero to 100. So 24 is poor. This project will obviously include complete reconstruction of Rochester from First Avenue to Ralston Creek, and will also include improvements to the sidewalk, ADA curb ramps, utilities, signage, and street trees. The project goals include, again, pavement replacement and utility improvements, pedestrian accessibility and safety improvements as detailed in the Complete Streets policy. And I'll be going over the Complete Streets policy here in a bit. To incorporate bike network improvements as identified in the Bike Master Plan, and to construct all elements within the existing right-of-way and limit properties' acquisition as much as possible. Again, this is a brief synopsis of the Complete Streets policy, but I did just want to run through this for you. The Complete Streets is a policy put in place to realize long-term cost savings and improve public health and reduce fuel consumption by contributing to walkable neighborhoods. Implementation of this policy will be through providing... Or will be through, you know, be by providing the... For the needs of all users and abilities in all planning, design, construction, reconstruction, and maintenance activities within the right-of-way. There are exceptions to this policy, but all exceptions must be documented by the city engineer and include supporting data. The Complete Streets policy specifies the design of the city's street network. Will create a safe, accessible, connected grid for all users of all ages and abilities. And will also specify is that CIP projects, including... Or, sorry, all CIP projects will incorporate Complete Streets facilities, including, but not limited to, sidewalk, ADA-compliant curb ramps and bus stops, and bike facilities. The success of this plan, as stated in the policy, is measured in miles of bike lanes, linear feet of pedestrian accommodations, and the number of projects in which street treats... No, excuse me, street trees are planted. As part of the public outreach process, the design team developed a number of alternatives, all showing sidewalk and bike lanes along the corridor. This was done to encourage discussion on the various design elements we are discussing tonight. It's also much easier to remove elements than it is to add them later on in the design process. So we tried to be upfront and encourage that discussion early rather than late. The design alternatives are presented to neighbors and local stakeholders at three public meetings. These meetings focused on the first residence adjacent to the sidewalk infill area, the second residence on Rochester, directly impacted by project construction, and the third, just general project area. The project team collected comments on multiple items, including traffic speeds, construction phasing, pedestrian safety, and others. But tonight, we'd like to mainly focus on the three listed here: bicycle facilities, the center turn lane, and sidewalk infill. The bicycle facilities identified in the Bike Master Plan are... And you probably can't see this because it's really small and hard to read. But they are recommended that bike lanes to be incorporated with new construction, reconstruction along this corridor. Minimal negative comments were received regarding the addition of these bicycle facilities. However, there was some discussion regarding the need for on-street bike facilities and possibly constructing a wide sidewalk in place of that. However, due to the limited right-of-way width, and if you remember back to the project goals, completing all the design elements within the existing right-of-way, this was limited... Or this was ruled out. Next is the center turn lane. As part of the preliminary design process, the consultant completed... Or was asked to complete a traffic study to evaluate the need for a center turn lane. The results from this study show that Rochester would continue to operate efficiently as a two-lane section. However, neighbors stated that they use that center turn lane to access their driveways and expressed some concern about the increased risk of rear-end collisions and if the center... If the center turn lane was removed. As part of the evaluation, we did look at other similar corridors. For example, First Avenue is a similar corridor with more traffic volume. There's others such as Benton and Court Street. And based on that, we concluded that there's no reason to believe that there'd be a significant increase in rear-end collisions. I should also state that typically with a slower speed, such as what's on Rochester, 25 miles an hour, you don't typically see the frequency and severity of accidents. I should also clarify that the portion of Rochester from Riedel and Court to First Avenue would remain a three-lane section just due to the school and turning movements into the school and at First Avenue. The final design element we'd like to talk about tonight is the sidewalk. The majority of neighbors immediately adjacent to the infill areas were objected to the addition of sidewalk for the following reasons. Again, this is a synopsis, but these are kind of the main focus, what we feel kind of we can address. The lack of need for additional sidewalk, difficulty accessing and maintaining the sidewalk, and the loss of mature trees. When discussing the project in general, neighbors expressed concern about high-traffic speeds and unsafe pedestrian crossing conditions. Some neighbors believe improved pedestrian crossings should be implemented in place of sidewalk infill. However, these elements may help but are not consistent with Complete Streets. Based on the characteristics of the corridor, Rochester and the project being located less than a mile from downtown, serving as that connection to the university with Regina and businesses at the First Avenue intersection, the staff believes that additional sidewalk is warranted in this area. The item of difficulty accessing and maintaining the sidewalk, neighbors were concerned about accessing a new sidewalk if it were to be constructed at street level because of the grade separation between the street and their backyards. An option that the design team is looking at is an elevated sidewalk, similar to what's on First Avenue. The First Avenue grade separation project has a retaining wall with a sidewalk on top and a handrail along there. This is a picture of it. However, in this instance, there would not be a retaining wall behind the sidewalk. We'd simply grade to match what's there. The wall height for this option would be six to eight feet at the tallest point. The other concern was maintaining the sidewalk. However, there's similar areas of double-fronted properties around the city. For instance, First Avenue, Sycamore Street, and some others where the residents are responsible for maintaining both the sidewalk in their frontage and at the rear. There are a few exceptions to this. For example, Dubuque Street, Bella Vista, near the Park Road intersection, there's a severe grade separation, and those residents are not responsible for clearing their walks. Final concern that I'll be talking about tonight is the loss of mature trees. Neighbors expressed a lot of concern about the removal of excessive... Or excessive tree removal. And I'm just going to preface this, too, that currently, because we're not into design, this is very preliminary. We're working with the tree inventory and would need more information about the trees on private property. However, it is assumed at this point that there will be potentially some impact to trees on private property. But again, they're only assumed at this point, and we'll need to get into design to identify all those in greater detail. City staff has consulted since the meetings with the Iowa DNR and the City Forestry Division to identify and evaluate potential impacts to trees. The inventory identified 35 trees in the right-of-way that would be potentially impacted by sidewalk infill, comprising of 13 different species and sizes ranging from three inches to 30-plus inches in diameter. Of these 35 trees, 30 were determined to be voluntary, invasive, or have structural issues, or low-quality trees. And five were identified as desirable. There are five European larch trees between Seventh Avenue and Rochester Court. They are a unique species with only 14 in the tree inventory. These trees range in size... These larch trees range in size from 18 inches to 30 inches in diameter and are good to fair quality. So going back to the Complete Streets policy and the exceptions, does this qualify as an environmental exception? When considering the tree quality and species, staff feels the benefits of constructing a sidewalk outweigh the impacts of the tree clearing. Forestry staff also recommends completing at least a one-to-one replacement with native species and use this opportunity to plant street trees, which is also a measure of success in the Complete Streets policy. Finally, our recommendation. City staff is recommending council proceed with the following design elements: sidewalk on both sides of the street, on-street bicycle facilities, a three-lane section from First Avenue to Riedel and Court, and a two-lane section from Riedel and Court to Ralston Creek. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
What were the... Could you turn back to the section? What are the dimensions that are proposed for the... On the... Well, they look a little bit different. The sidewalk widths and the parkway between the curb and the sidewalk. What are the widths that you're proposing for that?
So currently, we show a five-foot sidewalk or a six-foot sidewalk. The sidewalk on the south side will depend on the alternative we select, whether it's a sidewalk at street level or a side... An elevated sidewalk. And also, the parkway width on the south side would be determined at that point as well. We have some flexibility in where we can position that depending on what option we choose. The north side, we have a little bit more flexibility. And again, I think the intent of meeting the Complete Streets policy would be to plant street trees. So we would shoot for a six-foot width parkway on the north side. That seems to give those trees a little more chance of success because they have a little more room to grow.
Thanks.
Of those 35 trees that you said varied from three inches to 30 inches, do you have any... Can you give us any numbers? I mean, like, are 30 of them 30 inches or...
Fourteen... Excuse me. 14 of those trees are less than six inches in diameter, with three of them being candidates for replanting. 12 are between six and 12 inches in diameter. So 26 of the 35 are less than a foot in diameter. There are two trees between 12 and 18 inches, two trees between 18 and 24, three trees between 24 and 30, and two trees between... That are larger than 30 inches in diameter. I will say that of the two trees that are larger than 30 inches in diameter, one is a maple that has very poor structure and has been identified as needing to be removed regardless of if we move forward with this project or not, I guess.
You said for... You propose that you're going to do like some kind of... You alleviate the sidewalk. Is the same thing like in First Avenue? That picture?
Yep.
And is this also still going to be like maintained by the resident if you have it like this?
That would... Yeah, that would be the intent. The concern of the grade separation would be removed if we have an elevated sidewalk. This elevated sidewalk would then be at or close to the same grade of their backyards.
OK.
So could you clarify that again? The sidewalk would... The construction would be paid for by the city, but the maintenance of the sidewalk in terms of snow removal?
Would be on the...
Might have to be...
Yeah, on the homeowners.
Do you have any idea what the cost of the retaining walls and the work that would go into this?
Yeah. Do we have a number? We have a rough number.
Uh huh.
My name is Troy Culver. I work for Snyder &amp; Associates. We're the consultant working for the city. We've done some very preliminary looks at the cost. The scenario with the elevated sidewalk on top is the most expensive option, as you might imagine. We're looking at somewhere probably on top of $300,000 for the retaining wall and sidewalks to be included.
And the guardrail is... That would include the guardrail as well?
Yeah, the handrail that would be on top, yes.
Because it would have to be a guardrail over a certain height, correct? Because it would have to be a guardrail over a certain height, correct?
Well, maybe wordsmithing. Guardrail we would use for roadway protection, this would be for pedestrian, so handrail.
But there's a fall height issue that at a certain point is triggered that requires a more robust guardrail.
Right. Yeah, it would be, it would be similar to what's shown in the image on First Avenue.
Right, something like that.
And just to clarify, the elevated sidewalk design, the primary benefit of that or the reason for looking at that design is to match the grade of the sidewalk with the backyards for primarily convenience or?
Yep, for access and maintenance to try to alleviate that issue.
Okay. For the area that it needed the sidewalk, before that was a sidewalk and after this, also they, like, this sidewalk will connect?
Yes.
Okay, like, people will walk, but there is no sidewalk here. They go to the street, and again, they come to the sidewalk.
So currently?
Or they have to cross the street. They have to cross the street.
So, yeah, so, oh, yeah, so.
That's the current one, right?
Sorry, yeah, so in this exhibit, I know it's a little hard to see, but the yellow and green line is the sidewalk infill area.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So the yellow line indicates the areas where there's a grade separation, so this picture.
I see.
So the yard elevations are higher than the street elevations. This is where we would propose to install the elevated sidewalk or a retaining wall. And then the other green area is at grade, so that would just be sidewalk, no retaining wall.
Yeah, and it would be continual sidewalk.
Yep, yep, exactly.
So the residential concern is more west of Ashwood, is that correct?
Yeah, between Seventh and Ashwood is the, is the main area of concern.
You mentioned.
It's the most difficult to design for because of the grade separation.
You mentioned the goal of having this all within the existing right-of-way. Are we meeting that with the proposed designs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think there would be obviously some temporary construction easements that would be involved with this, but yes, all the permanent improvements would be within the existing right-of-way.
So the city already has that right-of-way access on the southern side where the sidewalk does not exist?
Yep.
Okay.
In terms of ongoing maintenance, am I correct that the, the property owner's only liability is the snow removal and obviously pavement repair like all property owners have? But if there's any problems with retaining walls or anything like that in the future, is that city responsibility?
That would be the city.
Okay.
And actually, I don't know how we would do the sidewalk, the structural sidewalk on the retaining wall. I don't know if that would be, because the only real example that I can think of in the city is First Avenue, and obviously, we haven't had any issues with that yet because it's a new project. So that could be a point of discussion.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know that we have some residents that wanted to address this as well. I understand that there's five, and there's a presentation that they wanted to do, and we ask that public comment is no longer than five minutes per person, and I think you all are well aware of that. And if there's anyone else that would like to address this topic, you'll also be, you're also welcomed as well.
Oh, right.
Presentation view down here.
Where?
That one.
Which one?
That little icon there.
This one?
Yep. And then here is where you choose the.
Okay.
And I'll ask you to state your name, and then there's also a place there where you write it. Oh, you brought the sticker, great.
Mayor Teague and members of the city council, my name is Nancy Jones. Several of us who are residents of Rochester Court are here this evening to urge you not to approve a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester as part of the Rochester Avenue reconstruction project. Before beginning our remarks, we'd like to thank staff in the city clerk's office for giving us an opportunity to put five comment periods together to allow a more coherent neighborhood response. We'd also like to thank Jason Reichert and others in the city engineer's office. While we have differing views, the engineering staff have been helpful and courteous in their interactions with us. We were not surprised to see that city engineers recommended a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester. In their neighborhood meetings, the engineers were very clear that their job is to implement policy, not to make policy or to make exceptions to policy. Their job was to put forth a recommendation that was consistent with the complete streets policy. We understand that Iowa City has a complete streets policy for a reason. All things being equal, street design should be equitable and consistent and support broader city goals such as being bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. But all situations are not equal, and not all situations warrant similar treatment. That's why we have a city council, after all, to exercise judgment and to make sure that we implement solutions that make logical and fiscal sense. In the short time we have, we hope to convince all of you that the proposed sidewalk on the south side of Rochester makes no sense by any city yardstick. Sidewalks serve people and businesses. In residential areas, they connect driveways and streets. Iowa City has about 262 miles of center-lined roads and 35 streets which are classified as arterials. Most of the arterials have sidewalks on both sides because it makes sense to put them there given the terrain or pedestrian traffic. Now, let's look at why there isn't a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester. For orientation, this slide shows the area we'll be talking about this evening, this long block of Rochester. All the property along the south side of this stretch consists of backyards that are connected to homes on Rochester Court. Now Rochester Court comes off Rochester at this point, then swings down and runs parallel to Rochester Avenue here, okay? All the properties we're talking about have Rochester Court addresses. All their driveways come off Rochester Court, you see those along here. None are off of Rochester Avenue. Seventh Avenue is here, leading north to a residential neighborhood and Hickory Hill Park, and south to the City High area. Ashwood Drive is over here, with Regina some distance to the east. Also note all the trees along this stretch, including five historic tamarack larches at one of the Rochester Court addresses. Later, we'll show a slide from the 1930s with the same larches pictured. The distance between Rochester Court and Ashwood is 283 yards, almost three football fields. For arterials through residential areas, it is one of the longest stretches in Iowa City without any driveways or any intersecting streets. There is a very steep bank along the road on the south, on this side, more than 10 feet high in places. So a sidewalk would require a retaining wall along almost the whole distance, and because of the steep bank, affected residents would have no access to a sidewalk from their properties. The affected residents would never use the sidewalk, in other words. Let's see what a retaining wall would look like. For a street-level sidewalk, the only comparable height wall is a short 50-foot section on Dodge Street, south of Iowa Avenue. I drive by this wall when I go to work, and I remember any number of times over the years when it was covered with graffiti. The only example of a longer wall is a new one on Dubuque Street, north of Brown Street, which is about 45 yards long. For a Rochester sidewalk, imagine a wall six times as long and twice as high going through a residential area with little foot traffic. The only example in Iowa City of a raised sidewalk, which is one of the options, is the 140-yard stretch on First Avenue for the railroad underpass. Imagine a raised sidewalk twice as long, and also imagine, as we will discuss in a later section, the cost and effort required for homeowners to do snow removal on such a sidewalk when they have no access to the sidewalk from their properties. The retaining walls in these three slides make sense because of high pedestrian volumes in their areas and because the sidewalks are accessible for maintenance. Neither factor pertains to the proposed sidewalk and retaining wall along Rochester. In the rest of our neighborhood presentation, we will focus on three main points. One, safety. Two, sidewalk maintenance and snow removal. And three, backyard privacy and tree loss, followed by a brief concluding statement. Now Michael Hovland will discuss the issue of safety.
My name's Michael Hovland. I live on 1808 Rochester Court. Aside from the goal of following the city's complete streets plan, pedestrian safety was presented by the engineers as the primary reason for installing a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester. Of course, safety is important, but if safety is a major concern for the project, then it's important to discuss who actually would be safer with a new sidewalk. Let's start by looking at who actually crosses the street now. The biggest reason people need to cross Rochester or any other arterial in town is getting to city bus stops. The Rochester bus route alone has 16 bus stops at uncontrolled intersections, that is ones without stop signs or traffic signals. According to Iowa City Transit officials, the Rochester bus route averaged 264 daily riders in the last fiscal year. If you live south of Rochester and want to take the bus into town, you have to cross Rochester to get to westbound buses. If you live north of Rochester, you have to cross the street when you go home on eastbound buses. A new sidewalk does nothing to make it safer for bus riders to cross the street. Who else needs to cross Rochester? Students going to and from school. Any students living in areas north of Rochester have to cross Rochester, most likely at Seventh to get to City High. Any students living south of Rochester have to cross Rochester to get to Regina. Currently, there is a crossing guard mornings and afternoons at the Ashwood intersection, which is the primary crossing point for Regina students. A new sidewalk does nothing to make it safer for the many students who have to cross Rochester. Who else needs to cross Rochester? Seventh Avenue is the primary pedestrian entrance to Hickory Hill Park, and there's a lot of foot traffic, especially people with dogs crossing Rochester from areas to the south. A new sidewalk does nothing to make it safer for the many dog walkers who have to cross Rochester to get to Hickory Hill Park. What do all of these groups of pedestrians have in common? None of their road crossings require a sidewalk. They're simply crossing the street. And a new sidewalk on the south side of Rochester does nothing to promote the safety of the bus riders, the students, the dog walkers, or almost any other group. There's one very small group of pedestrians, probably fewer than a couple dozen a day, that the city engineers classify as pass-through walkers. Let's look at this small group. Because there's no sidewalk on the south side of Rochester across from Regina, pass-throughs heading west would always start on the north side, which does have a sidewalk. Those heading east can cross Rochester anywhere from the beginning point of Rochester to Seventh Avenue. If the small number of pass-throughs know they are going to a destination on the north side of Rochester, why would they start on the south side? And if they do need to cross, they can walk across the street like all the dozens of other people who have to cross Rochester at unprotected intersections every day. I cross Rochester every day to and from work, and I also cross it most days in the summer when I head off on my bike. And we can see the existing sidewalk from our kitchen windows. There are simply very few pass-throughs, aside from a few joggers, dog walkers, and an occasional pedestrian. So what is the primary safety issue? It has to do with things that can be addressed relatively simply and cost effectively. The big problem we have is, you know, speed going westbound down the hill. People don't go 25 miles an hour, they go 40 miles an hour. This is an example of a solar-powered speed monitor on Seventh Avenue, south of Glendale, which would help with that, it doesn't eliminate it. The other situation, the university across from the Pinnacle Crest recently installed a solar-powered motion detector, flashing lights on the Pinnacle Crest. When students start to walk across the street, it starts flashing the lights. There's a similar one on Park Road at Furson where there's a pedestrian-activated crossing flasher at that, at that point. All of these inexpensive, $300,000 for a sidewalk. These things are real solutions to actual problems that we have in our neighborhood. Next, I'd like to introduce Deb Scott Miller, who will discuss the issue of sidewalk maintenance in the summer and winter.
Good evening, I'm Deb Scott Miller. We live at 1820 Rochester Court. If a sidewalk is installed, how would we, homeowners, maintain our grass boulevards in the summer and sidewalks in the winter? The option of an elevated sidewalk was not shared with residents, so I will address the lower sidewalk for us. Because of the steep bank along the affected area, the only access to our sections of the boulevard or sidewalk would either be from Rochester Court intersection or from Ashwood. Here's how far that is in yards for each of our residents. For Keith and I, we live at 1820 Rochester Court, and we would have to walk our lawnmower. 281 yards are almost three football fields in length just to get to our section of the sidewalk. Our neighbor, our homeowner at 1816 Rochester Court, has over 331 yards. Is there any other neighborhood in town where the homeowners have to walk that far to maintain the boulevards of their sidewalks? The situation for clearing snow in the winter is almost impossible. If you have a normal sidewalk on a street-facing house, you can easily access your sidewalk from your driveway. But because none of us have driveways on the south side of Rochester, there would be no way to get a snow blower onto the sidewalk except from the two ends. Think of the logistics of making that happen. Every section of the sidewalk would have to be cleared in sequential order, starting with the two ends. Because the city requires that the sidewalk snow be cleared within 24 hours of a snowfall of one inch or more, the only practical way to remove the snow would be to hire a company to do it. We have gotten an estimate from All Seasons Snow Removal in Iowa City, who stated that they would charge $365 to remove the snow from the proposed length of the sidewalk, and if it needed ice treatment, even more than that. For the 11 affected homeowners, each of us would be paying $33 every time it snowed or if snow or ice drifted back onto the sidewalk. It's not unreasonable to think that in a normal winter, we would have at least some sort of ice or snow event every week that would require snow removal. That would be well over $100 per homeowner per month, and that's on top of what many of the retired homeowners on our block pay on fixed incomes just to clear their driveways and front sidewalks. So they would be paying to clear a sidewalk that they never use. And then where are we going to put the snow? Because there's a high retaining wall attached to the sidewalk, we'd have to throw the snow back into the street, which would become a hazard. We don't have a homeowners association, so if not every household wanted to participate in snow removal, what would happen? Keith and I are able-bodied, and if we put on our snow boots and walk 280 yards to our section of the sidewalk to hand shovel it and not pay our fee, it would then fall on our probably more elderly and folks with fixed incomes in order to pay for that snow removal. And that, and with that, they could be paying up to $200 a month on top of what they pay for their front sidewalks. We feel there's an equity issue here. Are there any other neighborhoods in Iowa City where the homeowners are mandated to hire a snow removal company? Or are there any other neighborhoods in Iowa City with this kind of effort and expense to clear a sidewalk and one that they will never use? Another question we have is what about our home resale values? What kind of homeowner effect and expense makes sense to support a tiny number of pass-through pedestrians who can cross the street to an existing sidewalk on the other side? Now I'd like to introduce Wakiza Gomez, who will discuss backyard privacy and loss of trees.
Thank you, my name is Wakiza. I live in 1703 Rochester Court. So I'll be talking about, again, the backyard privacy. So I'll be talking about, again, backyard privacy and the loss of the trees in this area. There are 12,676 standalone or single-family homes in Iowa City. People who live in these homes don't live in their front yards, they live in their backyards. Throughout Iowa City neighborhoods, the overwhelming norm is that front yards border roadways and backyards, they either meet other backyards, as you can see in the circled area of the slide there, or they butt alleys. In either case, backyards are protected from street noise. This allows backyards to be the private space that homeowners have for eating and recreation. We did an inventory of all Iowa City neighborhoods, and there are only a small number of residences where the front and rear of the homes are bounded by streets, especially arterial streets. And our area is one of these. At present, most of our backyards have trees, hedges, and fences that protect us from the noise of a busy street. If you take all of the noise barriers away, we have nowhere peaceful and aesthetically pleasing to go on our properties to spend time outside. And getting to the other, the issue of the trees, I know that was brought up earlier, we estimate that at least 30 mature trees, including some unusual and historic trees, would need to be destroyed to provide room for sidewalk and retaining wall along this portion of Rochester Avenue. The root systems of other adjacent trees would be seriously compromised in the process and might not survive long. Here's a visual tour up Rochester from Seventh to Ashwood, so you can see what we would lose. That's kind of, yeah, that's starting at Rochester Court. So this is the house where I live around, and then the house next door to it. There are the five large, rare, historic tamarack or European larches that were discussed earlier between Seventh and Rochester Court that survived the 2006 tornado that went through the Rochester Seventh Avenue intersection. Here are the same trees, it's blurry, but that's a shot from the 1930s, a 1930s aerial shot, when the area is mostly farmland. There, I don't know, you can't really see, but there were eight of those trees at the time, so five of them have survived. If the trees were that big in the 1930s, they may be 100-year-old-plus trees, we're not really sure at this point, which could make them protected, and we're looking into this possibility. Let's see, so the rest of the slides, okay, this is 1718 Rochester Court. Just sort of progressing through, this is 1804, 1808, and this is where there's a large American elm, a large black walnut hedge, and dozens of daylilies on the bank there. 1810 Rochester Court, 1812, 1816, 1820, 1900 Rochester Court. There's 1912 Rochester Court. You can see one of the biggest sort of trees that we have on the block where the bank begins to flatten out, that would obviously be taken out by a sidewalk there. And then the last one is 1918 Rochester Court. So all the trees and plantings you've seen in the past 12 slides are within the city right-of-way and would all be removed for a sidewalk. To me, and hopefully to most of you, it doesn't make any sense to destroy all the trees in a 300-yard stretch, just out of proportion to the need and the scope of what the city is trying to accomplish here. This would also go against the city's policy of having a more diversified urban tree canopy. Iowa City currently has 2,000 ash trees that will need to be cut down in the next few years. The University of Iowa campus has another 500 ash trees that will need to be cut down. And if you drive east on Market Street, 13 ash trees have been recently removed. So that's almost every tree on both sides of the street between Johnson and Gilbert. All of these tree removals will transform Iowa City for a couple of generations, and not in a good way. No one wants to take down the 2,500 ash trees, but in this case, we have no choice. Why would we choose to cut down 30 healthy, mature trees to make room for a sidewalk that almost no one needs, wants, or would use? With global warming and climate change, why would we choose to cut down any of the trees if we don't have to? And now, Myla Grady will make, I guess, the last concluding remarks here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Myla Grady, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, who lives at 1804 Rochester Court. Her name's Mary Wasick, she's 91. She was going to come tonight, but the weather was a little bit too difficult for her, especially because she uses a walker. So if we've been successful in these 25 minutes, we will have convinced you that a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester is a solution in search of a problem. We hope that you can look beyond the letter of the law and the Complete Streets policy, and in your capacity as city leaders, apply judgment and common sense to this decision. There is no safety issue here. The overwhelming majority of pedestrians who need to cross Rochester every day are the bus riders and students and dog walkers who are crossing because they need to get to the other side, not because they are passing through the neighborhood. They will continue to cross the street whether there is a new sidewalk or not. However, we can make these daily crossings safer with the few inexpensive safety tools already described. People often use the iconic scales of justice as a visual representation of how we make difficult decisions between competing viewpoints. Figuratively, we put evidence on each side of the scale. And the preponderance of evidence tips to one side or the other. With respect to the Rochester sidewalk decision, imagine you are placing pro and con considerations on the scales of justice. On one side, put the destruction of almost all of the mature trees between Seventh Avenue and Ashwood. Then, put in the cost of excavation, landscaping, and construction to build a 300-yard-long sidewalk and high concrete retaining wall that will be a magnet for graffiti. Then, add the cost to the city of reimbursing the affected homeowners for trees that need to be destroyed. Then, add the loss of privacy and increased noise for affected residents, many of whom will lose their total privacy protection: trees, shrubs, and fences. Then, add the extraordinary cost and effort that would be required by the homeowners, many retired and on fixed incomes, to maintain the grass buffer strips in the summer and do snow removal in the winter for a sidewalk they will never use. Then, in the other dish, put a pinch of convenience for the very small number of pass-through pedestrians who don't really need a sidewalk when they can simply walk across the street, like all the other pedestrians who cross the street every day. The scales are pretty lopsided. You could balance them simply by saying, "Complete Streets policy or not, it makes no fiscal or common sense to put a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester." Thankfully, Iowa City is trying hard to be a green city and a carbon-neutral city. Trees sequester carbon and help us work toward carbon neutrality. Building a sidewalk here and removing so many beautiful trees in the process moves us further away from that goal. Is that what the city wants, especially with all the ash trees that have already come down and all the many ash trees that need to come down? Finally, Rochester Avenue is a gateway road from the east. What values does Iowa City want to project to visitors and residents who enter the city at this point? A quarter-mile of concrete retaining wall that looks like this, or this, or, the alternative, a stretch of greenway with canopy, trees, flowers, and shrubs, like this and this. That is the choice, and you can decide to make an exception to the Complete Streets policy if you believe, as we do, that this stretch of Rochester is beautiful and merits protection. Thank you, Mayor Teague, and members of the council, for listening to our concerns and weighing them carefully. At the very least, we hope that you will ask the engineering staff to calculate the cost of everything that would be required to put a sidewalk on the south side. Then, you can decide if it's worth the human and environmental cost to do so in exchange for so little benefit. Thank you so much for listening.
Yes, please step up in--
Yep.
Hi, my name is Denise Anderson. I live at 200 Windsor Drive on the north side of Rochester. I just want to say that I don't believe that the people who speed through that section live there. They come off the interstate, and then they drive faster speeds right up until First Avenue, and they don't want to slow down. And if there's a safety issue, I would say that that would be it, and maybe we can slow people down, write tickets, get revenue, instead of spend that kind of money for a wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Rolnik, and I live on the south side of Rochester, between Ashwood and Rita Lynn. I appreciate the hard work that the city has done and that Snyder Associates has done. And I've been to two of the presentations and listened to them and listened to my neighbors. And first, I want to say that I strongly support everything my neighbors on Rochester Court just said. So I don't need to go into more detail about that. I've sent you each an email in more detail of what I'm saying, except Councilwoman Mims, you didn't get one because your email on the webpage bounced. So you may want to look--
We'll check it, thanks.
So one of the things I had wanted to talk about was what they talked about, but they did a great job, so I support them strongly. And I am one of the people who often wants to walk from where I live to downtown, so I am one of those walk-through people. And crossing the street is fine with me, except I want to say an exception here. The issue, crossing the street is really difficult at certain times of day. It's very dangerous. I cross the street all the time to talk to my neighbor across the street, which I think is something you would want to encourage. But it's pretty dicey, because people's speed and the speed limit is not enforced. Also, where I live, and many people have this issue, we have driveways that you can't turn around in. So you have to either back into your driveway or back out of your driveway. You can't do it any other way. And with three lanes, I can back, you know, stand there waiting to back into my driveway, and people can easily go around me, you know, while I'm waiting to get a chance to turn in. If there are only two lanes, they'll have to wait behind me until, well, I don't know what's going to happen, because if they pull right up behind me, then I can't back in. And if the other side is full, you know, having that third lane is really critical to being able to back into or back out of. So I think you should keep that middle lane, even if it means making the sidewalks a little smaller or the green parkway a little smaller. Of course, I want you to make the parkway and the sidewalks ADA-compatible, you know, whatever the rule is, but maybe there's a minimum that you could do that would allow you to keep that middle lane. I am very happy to see a sidewalk on the south side between Ashwood and Rita Lynn, because I use that all the time, and I've been craving a sidewalk ever since we moved in there. So I'm happy to see that, and great. But the problem with the sidewalk along where the Rochester Court people live, I think, can be easily addressed, as they suggested, and also, this would help the safety issue tremendously, if you put in a push-button walk signal at Ashwood and Rochester and at Seventh and Rochester. That would make it, so anyone who wants to walk from downtown to First Avenue or First Avenue to downtown, they can start on either side. If they want to switch sides when they get to that place, they can push-button, cross safely, and no one has to maintain that extra sidewalk. I don't know how the cost of putting in those push-button walk signals compares to the cost of building that gigantic retaining wall, but I'm, well, I don't know how those compare, but something you might want to look at. So those are my comments. And in general, I urge you to be flexible here. I strongly support the Complete Streets policy in spirit. I think trying to force it to the letter here is a mistake that will, that is not worth it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Eric Raely. I live at 1718 Rochester Avenue. I'm on the north side, so basically not directly affected by the sidewalk running up the south side, except I do have to look at the south side. And the idea of an eight-foot retaining wall doesn't seem as attractive as a green space. There's no access to the property, and from looking at the volume of people, the pedestrians going both north and south, it's a very small number of people that are walking up and down Rochester. The students have to get to Regina, and crossing at Seventh or up at Ashwood where there's a crossing guard during schooltimes seems to be perfectly adequate. My one concern would be that kids, you know, jaywalk sometimes don't use the crosswalks, and people don't do 25 miles an hour down that hill. So that, to me, if there's a sidewalk on the south side, people are going to create a safety issue with the possibility of people jaywalking or, you know, running across the street with the traffic, whereas it's a pretty clear intersection at Seventh. And the three lanes does help people getting in and out of the driveways. So it would seem to me that by not putting the sidewalk on the south side, you could rearrange things. The bike lanes are definitely a thing that's needed, but that by not having to have that extra space, you know, we could shuffle everything around and possibly arrange things, you know, to get it, to accommodate everything. And I just don't think that the expense, and what you all said was, you know, terrific, but they, about the people trying to clear the sidewalk, it's definitely a job that has to be done, and it's not easy, and if you can't get to the sidewalk, it's even worse. So, yeah, that's my comment about the expense and the trouble of having a sidewalk on that side of the street, on the south side. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kelly, I see you're writing down names, but I do want to remind people to definitely sign in and state your name.
Good evening, I'm Becky Soglin. I live on Rita Lynn Court for the past 10 years with my husband, and we appreciated that we got to meet with the city staff and Snyder Associates on the 16th and learn about the project. And I'm here just primarily to address the section from Ashwood to Rita Lynn Court, the one that you saw, the section in green, which it sounds like there's not a lot of disagreement about. And we would hope you would put a sidewalk there. We understand and recognize our neighbors' concerns about that other, the other segment further down. I think they've raised a lot of important points. But if you could keep that sidewalk from Rita Lynn Court to Ashwood, that allows us, that's the fastest way to get downtown if you are already on that south side, or even if you cross from north to south. The fastest way to get downtown is down Ashwood to Glendale, because if you're staying on Rochester all the way, you're adding quite, you're adding actually a few blocks. And that's the way most of us go. I sometimes end up walking, and at night, I don't want to cross over again to, you know, I would have to cross to the north side, walk by the woods. I actually, just anecdotally, can say I know somebody who, with their children, does not like walking past the, on the sidewalk at night by the woods. They would-- I actually, just anecdotally, can say I know somebody who, with their children, does not like walking past the, on the sidewalk at night by the woods. They would like to be able to walk on the south side. So, because otherwise, then you have to cross again. So we would appreciate there. And I realize this is about the main facilities of the, the lane, the sidewalk. But you've heard a bit about the speed. And having lived there as long as I have, I would suggest that if the speed can be reduced from Mount Vernon to First Avenue from 35 to 25, that that, I think, would go a long way to getting those vehicles to slow down. Because you can be going 35 around that curve. If some of you are familiar with it, there's a curve on Rochester. You're supposed to be going 25 there. So you're always, already having to slow down for that, especially when you're inbound. So why not just make that 25? I think, again, it would go a long way to keeping that, that area safe. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Becky.
Hello there, Austin Wu, UIC City Liaison. I would just like to speak briefly in favor of, in support of the proposed bike lanes in Rochester. I biked on Rochester a few times, even though I don't live in the area. I dog sit semi-frequently there, so often going to and from gigs or houses, I'll, I'll go on there. And I would like to second other residents' concerns about the speed. It can be a little daunting going, having cars whizzing past. Right now, the center turn lane is kind of nice for cars to go past and passing bicyclists. But I can see very easily, maybe a less experienced cyclist or a child might be more apprehensive about getting on in the current position. So having that dedicated infrastructure and an integrated network is really crucial for getting people out of their cars and onto their bicycles. So I'd just like to support that segment of the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address this topic?
I'm, oh, sorry. I'm Paul Supple. I live at 2103 Rochester. So I'm in the green section, I believe, right? So the green section on the map. So we know we're getting a sidewalk in our portion of the, of Rochester, and it makes sense. All the people on Rochester Court, really it doesn't make sense. If you watch the walking pedestrians going by there, they are not going to be going down the hill. There's no reason for them to be doing that. And, and these guys, it's, it's really putting them out. Those of us up in our section, we're all, like Peter said, Peter, very happy. Very happy to be getting a sidewalk in our area. It's good, it'll go down to Ashwood. Makes sense for people to turn there to head to City High. The people coming from that neighborhood coming up to Regina. And they do have the proper crossing guards in those two places for the kids to cross over. They're stating that there's not enough traffic for a third turning lane. I think that probably means that there's not enough traffic for them to have problems crossing the street. So it's just my two cents.
Thank you. All right. Do want to have some council discussion, and so, thoughts here?
Well, I will just say, I mean, in general, when staff has come forward with designs, and particularly with our policy of complete streets, I've been, you know, fully supportive of that. I think we've heard, at least I feel, I've heard some really compelling arguments from the neighbors in terms of why, in that section between Seventh and Ashwood, it, we don't necessarily need it. And I, I was, like I said, I typically come in pretty supportive of following our, our complete streets policy. And I appreciate your compliments to staff, that they are doing their job. They're implementing the policy that is counsel we have voted on. And so it's not, not their position to make those changes. I, I guess for me, the things that concern me most, and I'll be interested to hear what fellow council members have to say, is, is one, how long of a block that is? And what that means in terms of access to that sidewalk for property owners, residents, either for the snow removal or from, depending on whether it's an elevated sidewalk or not. Or also potentially having to get around there with a mower if it's a low sidewalk and you've got grass between the sidewalk and the street. I realize we do have a few other areas, and staff showed that, where, where we have those kinds of situations in town. But they're few. And I think in many of those cases, one, they're flat, which makes that easier. When I look at this, I personally don't like the, the retaining walls. I don't, I don't think in general there's a beautiful retaining wall. And certainly not compared to the picture that's up on the screen right now. I know you can't see it as well, but the day lilies. And so, so when we talk about that that is, is an entry into the community, we have a lot of people that get off the interstate out on the east side and come in through. I'm concerned about the trees that would be removed, even though a lot of them, you know, maybe voluntary, we've got some that need to come out anyways. You know, that's, that's quite a few trees that I realize, you know, 14 of them are under six inches. But you start getting six inches and above in some of those really big ones. If they don't have to come out, and there's not a huge benefit for them to come out, it's hard for me to support that. So I'm interested to hear what other people say. But I'll have to say, I'm, I'm really leaning towards the supporting what the, the individuals that live on Rochester Court are saying, and not putting in that sidewalk between Seventh and Ashwood, so.
I, when I heard the presentation by the staff, I was really moved by it. And I think like, it makes sense to connect sidewalk over there and sidewalk over here with the sidewalk. But really after I heard the residents and like see all those beautiful pictures with all these greens and everything. And also, I wasn't really picturing it like where it is, the, the house is really high and how you have to do this. It, it, it doesn't come like click on my mind until you guys saw the presentation, which is makes sense to me. And I, it's really completely making sense to me not to put any sidewalks there. And also, all the solution, retaining wall, look ugly, as Mims said. You know, these beautiful flowers can never been compared to the, like this retaining wall. I will be supportive, resident, not to put sidewalk there.
Yeah, I, this is, we've had, and they were, they were shown, some of these conditions were shown in other parts of the city where retaining walls have gone in. So I too feel we, I certainly, in ideal circumstances, sidewalks on both sides make perfect sense. But I think we do need to allow ourselves some latitude when conditions on the ground suggest a different direction. And sometimes that can just be achieved simply by allowing a certain amount of latitude in the minimum dimensions for the sidewalk and for the setback parkway area. But in this case, it does seem, all things considered, that, that section between Seventh and Ashwood, and I learned a new term tonight, the pass-through circulation. That was something I hadn't heard before. If this were in a more urban condition, I would say yes, maybe having sidewalks on both sides are required. But in this location, it just doesn't seem to be necessary. It, it sort of speaks to the issue that can develop when you have a, you know, property that the backside fronts on a major arterial. That's kind of an unusual condition. And here, I think it was driven by the topography, basically. And it has become kind of a charming landscaped edge, which I think is something that adds character to that part of Iowa City. So I'm, you know, feeling, gosh, that as, as you tried to explain in your presentation, the cost benefit on this seems to favor keeping things the way they are on, on that stretch. I, I do think the larger issue here for me with regard to safety is the crossing issue. And it will be improved with the bike lanes and the removal of the center turn lane, because you'd have less traffic lane. You'd have just the, the two travel lanes and not three. And the, the bike lanes would set traffic away from, you know, the, the curb, which I think has a benefit. I, the, the suggestions that the residents made of having a kind of a pedestrian-activated crossing, I think is worth exploring. I do tend to think on an arterial, the one, and yet there's the one on Park Road. When a car is going over a certain speed, it can be, it's, it's less likely to slow down when such a thing is activated. I, I certainly think this is a good candidate, though, for trying that. But I would also suggest there are progressive approaches we could take if we found that that approach did not work. There are other, other ways of sort of improving the safety through, what is I believe called a HAWK beacon. It's a pedestrian-oriented signal, which actually requires the vehicles to stop. So this, to me, seems like a potential opportunity on Rochester, because as was noted, you also have the topography speeding up vehicles that are westbound. But in any event, I think that it's crossing the street that's more the issue, because you do have Regina, City High, Hickory Hill Park, many destinations along that corridor where people will be crossing. So I think, again, just minimize, let's minimize the impact of the project, make it cost-effective, and then address pedestrian safety with the crossing.
I had a question for staff relating to the, do we have to widen the road at all? Or, I know there'll be some repair.
Yeah, the current plan we show, and again, this would depend on the on-street bike facilities that we choose, but it'd be 11-foot lanes, a wide bike lane, six feet. So we would, I think, widen the street three feet.
And that, and that'll be?
In total.
Okay, because I know that we're going down to two lanes somewhere. But I guess specifically between Seventh and Ashwood, would that, that would be widened as well?
Yeah, that's the one, even though we're going to two lanes, would be wider because of the bike lanes.
So what's that going to do if we're increasing curb-to-curb by three feet?
There is still potential impacts to the trees along the corridor.
Could we not explore, and I know we've talked about this before, where we would have a bike lane adjacent to a travel lane, correct?
And that's, and that's what we're looking at. So either way, because it's a transit corridor with buses, our recommendation would be 11-foot lanes or a 10-foot lane with a buffer.
Right, well, I would, which we, we'd require widening the street to get the buffer in there?
Yep. So either way.
Well, I would, I would personally prefer having the narrower lane with the buffer as the allowing for the bus.
And that would be part of the negotiations with the bike group, too, and see what their preference would be.
So is that additional width going to come on the north side, the south side of the street? Or since we're not actually in the design phase, do you know yet?
I don't. It, yeah, right now, yeah, it'd be symmetrical. I think there would be the potential to, to look at alignment. But, I mean, be given the limited right-of-way width, we'd be pretty limited. Especially if we're looking at planting additional street trees and stuff, too, so.
So if we don't go with the sidewalk in that stretch between Seventh and Ashwood on the south side, we're going to have fairly limited impact then on those properties? On those banks and the, and trees that are already there?
Yep, with the pavement widening, and then there will be some utility water main work in the area as well. But it'd be, yeah, with no sidewalk, it's obviously a much less of an impact than if we were to construct a sidewalk with retaining wall.
I have one more question related to the elevation. So from people's backyard, will it be level to their backyards?
It would be at or close to the same level. The elevated sidewalk would be at or close to the same level as their backyards.
Okay.
And that's why we propose that option as an alternative to address that access and maintenance issue.
Okay, thank you. All right. So yeah, I guess for me, I wanted to know, like, you know, if we're widening the streets because of some of the things that you all definitely mentioned. I, you know, I, I think the councillors have said it best, as far as like between Seventh and Ashwood, it doesn't, at this point, seem like that's the route that we should go, that we kind of leave it without a sidewalk there. I do think that there needs to be some more exploration by the staff to still try to achieve some of the bike, you know, the, the master bike plan and all that other stuff. But just wanted to give my thoughts on this. I, I do think we need to do something different, especially within the Seventh and Ashwood. It is important to have bike lanes, you know, definitely. So even within that section that, right now, it sounds like people are not, well, I don't know.
No, I think, no, we're, I think we're saying, keep the bike lanes.
Yeah, absolutely.
All we're saying is, don't put in the sidewalk on the south side between Seventh and Ashwood.
Yes, yes.
And the speed is the same?
Right, I think, I think speed and safety are issues that the staff needs to continue to look at.
Yeah, and I would agree.
And I think that speed and safety, once this road has been torn up and put back together, there will have been basically no traffic for, for quite, for quite some time. And that's an ideal opportunity to put in new safety measures or start really enforcing the speed limit.
Janice, this is a good point about the, the construction. And obviously, part of this is the Rochester Avenue reconstruction, which there's no doubt, from what we've seen or heard, that, that it's in need of major repairs. And obviously, maybe the redesign as far as the width and the lanes and the bike lanes. But I, I think what hit home to me was the picture you shared with the scales of justice and balancing that out. And I think, and talking about making an exception to the policy. And granted, we, we made, Laura talks about policy all the time and, and transparency. And obviously, we make a complete streets policy for a reason, because we feel streets in our city are important. And we have hundreds of miles, a couple hundred miles of streets in the city. But we do at times make exceptions. There was a street on, an area on the west side where they were doing the sewer improvements, and, and the residents did not want a sidewalk. They'd never had a sidewalk there. And, and we agreed that just do it on the one side and not the other side. So it, it can be done, especially for something which it's been pointed out seems to be of so little benefit, except for those few, as, as John pointed out, the pass-through circulation that, that we hadn't heard before. That, that's the only benefit. You know, you really have to weigh things out. And also the cost, you know, we talked about, there was a phenomenal cost, but we don't know, then somebody mentioned as far as the landscaping and the excavation. There's all those additional costs, too. We're talking quite a bit of money then to, to add that sidewalk, and I just don't see the benefit.
Well, as the last councillor to speak, maybe I'll, I'll just, Pauline gave me a great in to be the naysayer, maybe, or to be the devil's advocate. But I, I'm just so pleased that the residents are engaging in this process and with city staff and coming out with such an articulate and helpful presentation. I just want to say that, you know, what we're, what we're not hearing tonight for the folks who may wish to walk on the south side of Rochester, and we're talking a lot about the pedestrian, small scale of pedestrian access, which really is forced by the fact that there's no sidewalk there. So I think we just have to make this decision with the understanding that we don't know what the pedestrian volumes would be if there was a sidewalk. And we shouldn't presume that there wouldn't be significantly increased pedestrian traffic if there, if there was a sidewalk there. I also think, you know, we heard from the widening of the street, and what I read in, in our staff report was that the DNR, I believe, gave an opinion that because of the, the reconstruction, the fact that we're ripping out the street, reinstalling some underground utilities, as well as undergrounding some utilities, that there will be impacts on the trees regardless. So I don't want us to make this decision thinking that we're going to save all the trees, because the, the improvements that must be done regardless of the sidewalk issue are probably going to impact some of these trees and going to impact some of these, these yards and the nice landscaping. So I just want to make sure that we're being open and transparent about that. It does sound like we need some traffic calming, regardless of what happens with the, the sidewalk on that side. I agree with what Janice said, that there should be a good opportunity to kind of reset people's thinking about driving through that corridor. But this, this is kind of our one shot in, you know, 20 or 30 years. So I don't make this decision or take this decision lightly. I think connectivity for pedestrian access is incredibly important. And when we talk about the, the goal of our climate action plan and balancing the, the needs and the desires of every person who may wish to pass through that corridor against the few property owners, I mean, that's, that's a difficult balance for me. And I think in my own mind, it's maybe a little bit, it's not quite as weighted as the presentation was tonight. I, I am, however, very pleased to hear that people are in favor of that sidewalk on the, the flat grade portion. And I would encourage us and staff to consider wayfinding. If we're going, if we're making this decision on the assumption that pedestrians would be then passing through down Ashwood to get downtown, rather than walking on Rochester, that we maybe have some indication of that being a pedestrian corridor, so that people can see and know and learn that that is the way to walk if they're currently not, you know, maybe they don't understand that that is the best, best way to get downtown.
Great. All right. I think in a second, we'll do a roll call here. And I, I do want to just echo what- just echo what Councilor Mims talked about in a relationship to the comments that the residents made about the staff. I really do appreciate hearing the positive words about the interactions of the staff, where they were professional, they were definitely helpful in helping you to understand exactly the, you know, what their marching orders were as far as, like, the, the things that they have to do as staff. So I really appreciate those words, and just wanted to acknowledge our staff and the work that they do. All right, we're gonna do a roll call, please.
Why don't we have a motion to amend, to eliminate the sidewalk between Rochester Court and Ashwood?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
You speak the motion.
Okay, sure. So the motion was to approve the, to approve the resolution minus the sidewalk between Seventh and Ashwood.
Actually, what we did was amend the resolution, and so now we're gonna do a roll call on the resolution as amended.
Okay. All right. So roll call as the, as the resolution is amended. Do I have a motion for that?
We already have a motion.
Oh, we already got the motion from the beginning. All right, great. All right, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. All right, motion passes seven to zero.
I'd just like to say thank you to the neighbors.
Yes.
For putting the time and effort that you did. That's really helpful for us, very much so. So thank you.
Well-done presentation.
Yes.
Eyes on the ground, case by case.
All right. We do have correspondence. I wanted to have a motion to accept correspondence.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, moving on to item number 14. This is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have 14A Parks and Recreational Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, December 31st through 2020. And we only have the one today, so as far as new. So.
Of the three, I thought Alex Hackman, I'm not sure how to pronounce.
Hackman, yes.
Yeah. Kind of showed the most engagement with our parks and rec, and maybe the most knowledge of, so I would support Alex.
I was going to say the same thing, Susan. I just, I was impressed with his, his application. A lot of thought into what he can bring to the commission with his experience, and he's spent a lot of time attending meetings and reading past minutes, and he really seems to have an understanding of what the direction of the commission really is. So I, I would approve of Alex Hackman.
I would as well.
Okay, I'm seeing some nodding of some heads, so, all right. So a motion to appoint Alex Hoffman.
Move.
Yeah. So move by Salee.
Second.
Seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 15, announcement of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. This is Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, April 7th, April 7th through April 1st, 2024. Applicants must be, applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. And then, item number 16, announcements of vacancies previously stated. This is Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Moving on to item number 17, and this is community comment, and we're gonna call up, I don't know if it's gonna be you, Austin or Charlotte.
Hello again, Austin Wu, USC City Liaison. The reason I wasn't here earlier was I actually have a class this semester from 5:00 to 6:20 p.m.
All right.
So I'll actually be gone for all of them. But anyway, first, I'd like to say congratulations to the new faces and positions up front, so Janice Weiner and Laura Burgess. Congratulations, nice to see you guys out there, as well as congratulations to Mayor Bruce Teague and Mayor Protem Mazahir Salah. I'd also say welcome back all students to the new semester, started off today. And there's a few upcoming university events of note already. Anita Hill will be speaking at the Iowa Memorial Union on Thursday, the 23rd, at 7:00 p.m., presented by the University Lecture Committee. Spectrum UI will be hosting the 15th Annual UI Drag Ball at the IMU Main Lounge from 10:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 25th. And HAWK The Vote, the Public Policy Center, Political Science Department, and UISG will be hosting a mock caucus on Friday, the 31st, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., also at the IMU Main Lounge. And there, hot coca, snacks, and prizes will be available. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. So we'll do city council updates. So we'll start with Counselor Taylor.
Well, it was unfortunate that some events over the past week or so were, were canceled or postponed due to the weather, but there still were a lot of MLK events, and I applaud the folks who were hardy enough to walk from East Dale Plaza to Mercer Park. I have to be honest, I drove, and then it wasn't really that cold. I could have walked. But, but it was a great event, very well attended there at Mercer Park. Congrats to all the organizers for that. And then, of course, the event at Bethel AME Church apparently was well-attended also and a good event. And Austin touched on the Anita Hill, there's several. I'd encourage people to look at the calendar. It wasn't just yesterday, Monday events, there's many events going on throughout the rest of this weekend into February for, to honor Martin Luther King. There, somebody touched on, I think Laura touched on, the reception for Mark Nolte that was to have been last week, but the weather, impending weather, it was starting to get pretty icy by the time it was supposed to happen. So I, as well as several other people, really didn't attend that, but I offer my congratulations to Mark and wish him well. It seems to be a time for people leave, because I see Simon out there. He'll be leaving us soon and going on to better things, which means that the person he's replacing there, Mary Ann Dennis, in the Housing Fellowship, we're gonna miss her a lot, but good luck to Simon in his new position there. This Thursday, oh, speaking of Simon also, he's our ADA compliance person, and this Thursday, I've been invited to join a group of individuals that are going to plan the ADA celebration this year, because this is, it doesn't seem that long, 30th anniversary of, of the ADA, the actual ADA. And so they're planning a big event, would either be late summer or possibly this fall. We'll be talking about that at the meeting this Thursday. So I'll look forward to more information on that. That'll, that'll be fun. I want to remind people about the street parking, and with the snow emergencies, please be aware of that. You don't want to be towed, so just be cautious of that with any snow emergencies, which are, I'm not looking forward to the rest of the week, possibility of that. So, and also, while on that note, thank our street crews for the hard work they've been doing over the last week or so with our, with our storms. And also, on the note of winter, encourage people to look up into the trees, because the eagles are back, and it's really, the one nice, fun thing about winter is, is seeing the eagles. It's really a beautiful sight. Not while you're driving, please, when you're stopped at a light or something, but, but notice the eagles, because there's a lot of them this year.
I would like to echo what Pauline said about the MLK events. The, I did actually walk, and it was, it was, as, as I believe the, the mayor and Mazahir did, it was, and it was chilly, but perfectly, it was, it was, it was walkable, thanks, in fact, to the, the police liaison who, with others, led us on a vehicle on the streets as opposed to having to walk on a couple of sidewalks that, for some odd reason, had not been cleared. But the events at Mercer Park were really wonderful, to see probably 100 people making literacy packets for kids, people of all ages, making those packets was really wonderful, as, as well as many of the sentiments. I was at Bethel AME as well, wonderful service. I also attended on the 16th, the, the South District Voter Engagement and Registration Event, which was really entailed enormous numbers of hours of organization by J.C.K., a number of the religious communities in town, combined with various civic organizations, really did a terrific job in putting, in putting this event on. I really appreciated the fact that they, they, they had translations of materials into five languages and interpreters there for all who, who needed it. So a tremendous initiative, and I hope it won't be the last time.
I'd just echo what the other councilors have said about the Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration on Monday, and just thank the mayor for being someone who sings, because I will say that that was a fantastic aspect of, of the event, was, was all the singing. So I'm all for that. And was gonna echo what Janice said about the voter engagement event. It was just tremendous and really exciting to see people being empowered and registering and having, again, the people who are having their assistance with having their voting right restored. This Saturday, I'll be attending the Iowa City Area Chinese Association New Year Celebration at the Corville Performing Arts Center, and those are all my updates.
Well, I, I will just mention that this coming Tuesday, a week from today, on the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Iowa City Public Library, will be the Transit Study of the Route Changes. So those who are interested in that, this would be the time to attend. And hopefully, the weather, although it sounds like it's gonna, it's not gonna be cooperating, but boy, it, certainly from my perspective, anyway, really does put a damper on what I would like to do, because it's just, you know, discouraging out there. So I'm happy to hear that some of you were, nevertheless persisted.
Yeah, the MLK event at Mercer was great, just to see so many people there and such diverse ages and so many different people performing and celebrating. So that was, was a great event. And, yeah, I just, I'm glad you mentioned that Transit Study Meeting on the 28th, they'll be out of town, but I hope people can get to their, get there and hear what, you know, what's going on and give any input at this point. So it's, just encourage people to be really safe out there. There are still a lot of icy spots, both on the streets, I discovered today, no accident. Coming down Washington Street to Gilbert is a little icy. And sidewalks, too, even though people are trying to do the best they can, just, just be extra careful, and especially, you know, as you're driving, be cautious with people on the sidewalks or trying to cross streets, so.
Okay. I think I become better on, like, really highlighting or remembering what I was doing the week before, and I was writing it down. Okay, same thing, like, on the 16th, I just wanna, I don't wanna, I guess, repeat it, but I was there, too. It was very nice day, and especially the translation was great. And also, I guess tomorrow, we have the City Manager Roundtable Meeting, and we're gonna be attending on the 23rd. The mayor and I, we're going to DC to attend the mayor conference. And on the 3rd, Iowa City Federation, if they have their Achilles' Summer, everybody's invited. Okay, the, also, the 1st of February, the Black History Month, Bruce and I, we're gonna have the meet, Mayor, Mayor Bruton, Meet and Greet, and it will be at the Multi Generation Center, which is owned by Bruce, and this is public. Anyone can come. Yeah, from 3:00 to 5:00. Please, note your calendar and come. And of course, we have the caucus on the 3rd. Please, don't forget that. That's very important thing. And that's all I have, I guess. Yeah.
All right. And lots of the events have already been covered. I just wanted to make one, mention one thing about MLK, since yesterday was the celebration, MLK Day. One thing that he said was darkness cannot dry out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And so just think about, what are we doing for others is one of the key things that I've been saying to people. We have the opportunity to do whatever we need to do to make our world and our community a better place. And so the, the events of Dr. King Day was amazing in our community, and it's been going on for a week, and it continues. And Maz did mention that we're gonna be going to Washington, DC for the Mayor's Empowerment, Mayor's Innovation Project. And we're happy because we have a meeting with Senator Grassley, and so that'll be taking place on Friday. So we'll have some opportunity to meet him, and maybe there'll be a few things that our city would like to definitely just mention very lightly. But I want to go to staff to see if you all have any updates and things to share.
Two quick things. I had made a mistake in my summer meeting schedule memo that we discussed earlier. So if you can just scratch, you know, scratch those dates, I will get back to you in your next packet with a new suggestion. I think it'll look much the same, probably two meetings in June, one in July, but the, the weeks will be off a little bit, so I apologize for that. And then, I also wanted to acknowledge Simon's last meeting, although, of course, you're welcome to come any Tuesday night, Simon. Simon and I started at the same, roughly the same time, eight-plus years ago. I really don't know City Hall without Simon in it, and I'm kind of terrified to think of what City Hall's gonna be like without Simon in it right now, because he's, he's just been such a great partner in the, in the city manager's office. So while we wish him the best, we're certainly gonna miss him.
I don't know what City Hall is like without Simon either, so I wish you the best, and we'll miss you.
We miss you, too.
All right, Eleanor?
I do know what City Hall is like without Simon. It's much better with Simon here.
And Kelly? All right. Great. Well, we will definitely miss you, Simon, and I'm impressed with your, your knowledge, like, it just rolls off your tongue. All right, be there anything else for tonight? Then could I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Weiner. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.